Today's agenda action, items unless otherwise noted, no action, but inside and until it properly is avoided meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration.
And items. Yeah, well, I guess we'll start over. The Lyon County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, August first, twenty twenty four. Action be taken on items unless otherwise noted. No action be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or moved from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. The Board of County Commissioners convenes as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And today's meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Today's roll call, we have Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hawke, day in chambers, and Commissioner Jacobson is on Zoom with his hand up. Thank you, sir. Today's invocation will be given by John Poundstone of Joy Church. All rice, please.
Good morning, and thank you. Heavenly Father, I come before you humbly and expectantly. I thank you for these elected officials and the authorities of our county. We ask you to bless them and ordain them in their efforts, and we certainly honor their service and their positions. I thank you too, Lord, for inspiring the writers, not our nation's founders and fathers for our United States Constitution. Help us each and everyone to honor and serve that. Well, as we approach this election season and we approach this autumn with all that's going on, I ask your divine assistance with wisdom and guidance and harmony. You celebrate diversity, so do we, and we also wish harmony. So God, please join us today. Please guide and please give us wisdom and discernment. In the masterful name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Please join in the flag.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under the God of the visible.
The public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, but maybe return to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. So public participation. If anybody wants to come up front, sir?
The same thing about visiting friends out for fifteen years, they try to come in and. They reduce the speed limit to thirty mile an hour, both of them, they work. They were they worked to cut out the car, even everything was counted. But just if people aren't leaving the group. And we're still going forty, fifty mile an hour. The sheriff comes down, busts on the shoulder with fifteen yards. They slow down right where the sheriff is, and then go back sixty miles an hour. You can count the people going thirty mile an hour with one hand. For the best, they're picking up their water. And if they're going forty. If they're going forty, they're getting passed. It's pathetic. It's been going on forever and nothing being done. If you'd write some tickets, find them and put it on Google, we're running a speed trap, maybe they slow down. And I really feel for the people that are in mound house, they think they're going to reduce the speed limit there, and they better hope the highway control enforces. Thank you, George Robinson. Are you signing?
Sheet up there. Is she missing? All right.
I'm Nancy Henrichus, and I'm here to find out who our public administrator, Bob Ghetto, is accountable to. Everybody I talk to seems to pass the buck to someone else. I don't know where or why, but we need to get something straightened out. And what I need to get straightened out is my friend died June twenty seventh. She has a cat in the apartment still. I notified him. I know that the funeral home notified him. I know that the Yarrington Manor notified them, Casey, and we need to know who he's accountable because this needs to be taken care of. If we to let that cat in there over a month without food and water and the box being changed, we would get it for animal cruelty. I don't believe this is being taken care of properly. I need to know who he is accountable to. And I'm Nancy Henrichus.
I'm Linda Moya, speaking on the same subject. We don't even know if he's notified the family members. The lady has three or four children. We have no idea. We have no idea what the dispersments. It took him three weeks to give the funeral home permission to go ahead and cremate her, but they haven't even been paid. And we have no idea what they're going to do with the ashes because he has to release those. Um, she's had verbally asked Nancy to go ahead and throw the ashes over by a lake and whichever, but of course, we can't do anything. So the family's notified, and we know what their wishes are as well. So we need to figure out, is he responsible for all of this? And why isn't he doing his job? Thank you.
Uh, we are not allowed to to comment on public comments, but I have discussed this with the county manager. So I'll just let you know that. Okay?
Thank you.
My name is Lenona Hibley. I live in Stagecoach, Nevada, and I'm in here. I have laryngitis, so I'm coming around. I'm here in regards to what's on the agenda this time regarding the rodeos.
Right, and that is an agenda item, so we will have public comment during that agenda item. Yeah.
I have an item to give to all you guys. It's from them. Can I give it to her?
And during that agenda item, you may come up and do public comment.
Good morning, Amanda Bernard, and I would just like to say thank you to a couple of awesome Lyon County employees. Uh, central area commander Jeffrey Miller attends almost every Stagecoach as I was regroup meeting. If he doesn't attend, he has somebody else attend. At one of the meetings, a resident provided public comment concerning the large amount of tumbleweeds that we've had this year and how to deal with them. At a later time, Commander Miller arranged for the inmates to pile up the tumbleweeds, and the Lyon County Road Department came and removed them. I just want to give big kudos to Commander Miller for taking action and the road department helping out. I'd also like to provide a thank you to Catherine Brits Cheggie. I don't think I pronounced that right, um, from the road department. Um, we have a big problem with speeding vehicles on our road when certain events occur in our neighborhood. In talking with some of these speeders, I I talked to them on this neighborhood road, they're under the erroneous impression that because there is no speed limit sign on this road, that there is no speed limit, so they can go any speed they want. I completed a sign request form and submitted it, and Catherine was very quick to respond, and we now have twenty five mile per hour of speed limit signs on the three roads. So I just want to thank these awesome Lyon County employees and give them some food.
Any further in-house public comment? Seeing nothing on Zoom, we will move past public participation and go on for possible action review and adoption of agenda for item five. Commissioners, anything you would like to change on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I need to pull item sixteen C.
Okay. Sixteen Cs can be pulled. And fourteen A will be moved up since Jones has an appointment this afternoon. I guess in Las Vegas, we requested it would made them be moved up as early as possible, so might be moved up like right after six D before six E, but wherever I can fit it in during the time. But some point we'll put fourteen A. Uh, who's on this?
Commissioner Jacobson, some feedback from you.
Um, it's quiet in this room.
Okay. So sixteen Cs pull fourteen A will be moved up at a point earlier in this in the schedule here on the agenda. Do I have a motion on that?
Move to approve the agenda with the removal sixteen C.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion passes five zero. And we'll move on to time certain six A, time certain at nine AM. It is twelve after for presentation only update from the Bureau of Land Management on current activities. Morning.
Joshua Tarnian, I'm the acting field manager of the Sierra Point Field Office, Southern City District. Um, I do have a couple maps that the mission would like to just kind of get some idea of locations and stuff like that. Sometimes just words on paper is not the greatest. So it wasn't, huh? I have a whole bunch of. So our public affairs officer who generally runs this or helps me with this kind of stuff because out this week, so. All right, um, couple updates for you. That was in the report. The uh, BLM is looking to, well, we've received application from um, Atlantic Richfield for the Yarrington Anaconda Mine Site to transfer lands to them for it for to help for them to help facilitate cleanup of the area. BLM is is working through that environmental assessment currently. Kind of thing, and then also working with our appraisal, we like lands, land appraisals kind of thing to get that transferred, so. Or to see if we will be transferring. Um, just kind of an update on that. There is an update for kind of off-highway vehicle race, you know, uh, events that are going on. We have the best in the desert, which is August sixteenth to seventeenth. There is the stomping grounds three hundred, which is September thirteenth to the fourteenth. Nevada Off-Road Association is looking to do a off-road event on September twenty eighth. Gold Rush is on October twelfth, and the Fern forty-five is looking to be November ninth. We receive applications for those. We have a number of solar projects that we've received application for and have gone through the what we call our variance process. And so that process, uh, uh, our director of the BLM has approved us being able to amend our resource management plans to allow solar in temp or potentially allow solar in certain areas that were excluded in the twenty sixteen solar EIS that kind of amended our RMPs at that point. So we're working through the process on those. One is the Harper Butte Solar. And that's fact is that the variance package was approved by the director and F five twenty-one. And that project is in what we would call baseline surveys. So once it gets through the variance process, we meet with the applicants. We tell them what kind of information that they need to gather, and then they go out and they have a third party contractor that goes out and gathers that information. So that's going to be our baseline surveys. So that project is in baseline surveys and we're looking, it'll, it's usually about a year, year and a half in those baseline surveys, depending on when they come in. There's certain biological windows that have to have that they can only collect data on during a certain time to be here. So about a year, a year and a half in there, they develop a reports, those come back to BLM, and then from there, we can move forward with the National Environmental Policy Act process. The Mason Valley and Pine Net Solar Projects um, have completed variants and for Mason Valley, we are looking and they they're finishing up the baseline surveys right now. We're getting those reports in and getting and getting ready to move into that National Environmental Policy Act process. They will also have resource management plan amendments, and so we are expecting sometime in November to have them notice some intent filed in uh, the federal register for the to announce the need for process starting. Uh, Libra Solar, that was a, that is another solar project that the final EIS was just announced last week, last Friday, I believe, in the federal register. So notice of availability was issued for the final EIS last Friday for that project. So that will be out for at least thirty days, and then after that period, BLM can write a decision. Record decision on that process on that. Then there is what we call Artemisia Solar. This is another uh, yeah, yes, north of Yarrington, so it's a little bit north of uh, where Mason Valley is. And that pro- and that project is, uh, it's the variance process is going through our headquarters office right now and can be put in front of the director shortly. To start that. So for realty updates, the we're continuing to work with the sort of city of Burnley to um, process the furniture land bill and the transfer of the lands that were in there. We're hopefully going to be, uh, the plan is to be through phase one here by the end of this year. Um, hopefully short sooner, um, and then we're starting conversations with them about phase two and um, what that looks like, how that's going to be done. We're going to, uh, in September, October, that will be kicked off internally with the BLM and get a mighty interdisciplinary team assigned to it. We'll be meeting with the city of Burnley, uh, and their contractor with Rogers, October, November-ish to kind of talk about what their needs are for that process. And then after that, that starts into the baseline surveys, we kind of give them the information we need for the baseline surveys and that kind of stuff to start the national environment policy that process for those those phase two transfers. There was not much of a update to the wild horse populations. We, I think there one pine nut mountains was flown and La Home La Home uh, was flown there. The numbers that were estimated previously in our previous, they were about that what we saw in those that there wasn't a twenty twenty-four census in the other enforced mountain or wasn't. And so those numbers stay the same based off of our estimates. We BLM received a request for by Skyline Fiber. Yes, or Sky Fiber, so you can to put in a fiber optics line from Smith Valley up through Yarrington. Um, to kind of connect up of get high-speed internet developed into this area. And BLM is processing that application, and it's going through our interdisciplinary team to start collecting data and try to get that issue. And then we have an internal, um, internal BLM uh, project to, uh, we call it, it's a Playa Lakes project restoration projects, and that would be in a number of different areas. A couple of them are here in Lyon County that we would be basically going through and filling in some of the some small pits and stuff like that to try to restore the hydrologic. Uh, the flow and stuff of some of the plies kind of thing, and it's mainly to enhance Williams family, which is a sensitive species, uh, plant species to enhance habitat.
Questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate you guys coming and giving us updates, just a couple of questions. One, I I don't believe there's no horses at Horse Mountain, but but that but that's okay. You you guys have such a difficult job of horses. Anything you do is going to get criticized by one side or the other, so my hat's off to you on that. I had a comment now it went away, so. One one thing I did not realize how many off-highway vehicle events we have going through Lyon County every year. That's 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 amazing. So again, I certainly appreciate your.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Um, the solar, have any of these variances been denied, or do they all just get approved?
At this time, my understanding is the variances have been approved by the director with that, and then it just allows us to consider the being able to do it. It doesn't necessarily say that the the projects themselves will be approved. So it just allow the director says, yes, you can go through and and start the national environment policy act process on them, but it doesn't necessarily say done project. So but my understanding is at this time, no, um, we have not denied.
Yeah, my, I just want to say these are all kind of a concern to me because local government has no voice in this process, and we are directly affected.
Commissioner Keller?
So when you weigh those solar fields, uh, do they get the same consideration as the rest of the flip my stuff? As far as hunting, fishing? Because that's a lot of lot of acres that you're taking out, and I don't think it's in the best benefit of uh, Lyon County, that's for damn sure. So, uh, we don't have any say in. I I'd rather go out and fish on that and have our citizens use it, so and right of ways and everything the flip has.
Our county manager, you have a?
I have a question for you. Um, so solar developments on private land in Lyon County require a conditional use permit. And so I'm wondering if BLM will work with us to require that conditional use permit and acquire those projects to adhere to our development standards for projects on BLM land.
I will look into that, um, you know. I generally the way that we would partner with the county and especially within during the National Environmental Policy Act reviews and that kind of stuff and figure out, you know, you know, we have a proposed action from the applicant, but are there, you know, other alternatives that we need to look at, other different uses and um, you know, mitigation measures or design features that we need to build into it and stuff. And so we usually try to build that into the into the uh, national by policy review. But uh, and this might be part of it.
Okay, yeah, because I know we participate in an EPR review for um, most of these projects, but it seems like sometimes, um, you know, we make recommendations for say roads that can be used to and from projects because that does impact Lyon County directly and you know, I just want to make sure that those concerns are being heard. And yeah, sometimes the need the need for process, it doesn't seem like that.
Yeah, and depending on the level of participation, whether cooperated agency, let's have some conversations about how how we can improve that.
Commissioner Keller?
And I'm, we're also concerned about bonding on those projects, on bonding on those projects, uh, because we have no say you guys require it, but I've also seen that we're nationally, they've let that go by, they've signed off on the bonding, and it's on our land. It's you're the you're the manager of the land, but it belongs to the state of Nevada. So we want to be part of that bonding.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I my thought came back, but it actually, you can tell by the conversation, we're all concerned about large-scale solar farms going in here. So the more cooperation you can, the BLM can have with the county, the better it's going to be for everybody. So certainly appreciate you guys reaching out to us early and often.
Anything further? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
What? Oh, I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, it's got to get unmuted.
Yeah. Unmute.
Good. All right, thank you. I had to be unmuted on that end. Um, thank you for the presentation. I guess I share similar concerns with the solar. I would like to see BLM reach out to these miles upon miles of rooftops, uh, these big warehouses, um, and try and exhaust some of that space before we jump into the public lands and BLM. I share similar concerns, uh, whether it be wildlife migration routes, um, just off-road use, et cetera. Um, and then it does devalue the property around those solar fields for sure, because nobody wants to wake up and look outside and see those um, solar fields. So I do appreciate your time and and I know your hands are tied tied with a lot of wild horses too, but I've never seen um, an area in Nevada where they don't do a a reduction in horses where they stay the same over periods of years. It seems like they do increase, so uh, just assuming that they are staying the same, I think is a slippery slope. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and on that, I know that, I mean, I know that we estimated some population increases in that in there. We haven't done census is on. Why then? I don't know if we just didn't find any. I think a lot of what I'm seeing, I'm relatively new here, but what I'm seeing is that a lot of our herd management areas are overpopulated, and so we are looking to try to reduce this.
One more thing on that, when we were talking about the the other impacts, the I also want to know what some of the other stuff like tourism, stuff like that that we that impacts our communities, that a big solar field out there is not going to help us out. So the impacts on our local community, I'd really like to see you guys weigh that.
Be good. Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we have a six B time certain at nine ten, and it is nine twenty-eight for presentation only report from Chris Matervich with Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, activities in coordination with Lyon County and Nevada Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair, um, and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kelly Norman. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner for the Carson Area MPO. Thank you for making time to listen and discuss two of Campbell's plans involving portions of Lyon County. So I'm here today because over the course of completing these two plans, Lyon County residents continuously contacted me to speak about transportation issues they were experiencing in their day-to-day lives, especially along US Highway fifty. So Campbell's been working on these two plans over the last year that include uh, these portions of Lyon County, and these two plans are the Campbell Local Road Safety Plan. Are the Campo Local Road Safety Plan and the US 50. East Carson Complete Streets Corridor Study. And I'll present to you the background data, the methodology, the issues identified. Key recommendations discussed within these plans. And a good plan leads to informed actions. So I'll speak about the local road safety plan background and purpose, the intersection of Highlands and US 50, the issues identified at this location and key recommendations. Next, I'll move on to the US 50 East Carson Complete Streets Corridor Study. I'll go over the issues identified there and key recommendations from phase one of the plan concentrating on this Lyon County portion for the Commissioners. Finally, I'll go over the next steps and identify how Lyon County and Campo can keep working together to improve safety and reduce fatalities and serious injuries on our roadways. But before all that, I'll turn it over to Chris Martinovich, the Transportation Manager for the Carson area MPO to give a quick summary of, of Campo.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for having us as, as mentioned. My name is Chris Martinovich. I'm the manager of the Carson area MPO. I just want to give a quick summary. I don't, I don't know that we've spoken to this board in, in recent memory. So I just thought I'd provide a little background on what Campo is and the services that we provide and what areas we cover. So Campo, the Carson area Metropolitan Planning Organization was formed on February 26th of 2003 and we're responsible for the Metropolitan Planning processes. In Carson City, Western Lyon County and Northern Douglas County. We run out to Bryce Street. Shove his road out there, Shave's Road on the, on the, on the eastern end of our boundary, which, which is in the western portion of Lyon County. We also go down to Stephanie Lane in Douglas County. We're staffed by Carson City Public Works. So there's an interlocal agreement that allows staff to serve as both agencies. We have a policy board. It's a seven member board. Commissioner Henderson is our representative on the camera board. Campo in general is responsible, as I mentioned, for transportation planning and we work closely with our partners at the state DOT and dot as well as federal highway administration and the federal transit administration. We have a robust public involvement process, which includes our public participation plan as well as other planning documents, which are all required under federal law. The establishment of a metropolitan planning organization is in federal law under 23 USC 134. And it outlines that areas that have been identified by the census of a certain population must create a metropolitan planning organization. Once we reach that threshold of 50,000 people, that is the impetus for creating that, which is when we were created in 2003. We work closely with our agency partners. We're looking to, you know, continue to increase our participation in Lyon County. But we work closely with Endot and in Carson City and Douglas County as well for our planning activities. That gives the quick summary that I wanted to provide. At the end, happy to take questions. I'm going to turn it back to Kelly who's going to dive into our local road safety plan and our US 50 corridor study.
Thanks, Chris. So there's a procedure for a local road safety plan that begins by analyzing the data. And identifying areas to proactively address the safety needs. So we identify and prioritize intersections and corridors, engage with stakeholders. Prioritize projects and finally implement the proven safety countermeasures. So a local road safety plan, this local road safety plan analyzed crash data from 2018 to 2022 using four crash metrics. The number of crashes, the critical crash rate analysis, the equivalent property damage only method. And the probability of specific crash types exceeding threshold proportion. Now. If you want more background about the crash analysis, I suggest that, you know, you read. The report itself, there's, there's a wonderful memo explaining all of these analyses. Within the local road safety plan document. Based on these results, we were able to establish a baseline for identifying safety improvements and presented those recommendations to stakeholders and 20 priority locations were identified. Our goal for the local road safety plan was to develop a plan that meets the requirements for a safe streets and roads for all grant. That way we can apply for more funds to develop these recommendations. The local road safety plan establishes a baseline evaluation for safety investments. Campo also signed a pledge for zero fatalities by 2050. I want to thank all of the stakeholders who participated in this plan. Commissioner Henderson participated in this plan as a Lyon County representative. In the first stakeholder workshop we conducted, we analyzed all of these 20 priority locations and looked at how we could narrow it down to 10 to study in depth. It was important for Campo to analyze areas outside of Carson City too. And at this point, Campo staff didn't realize the importance and the prescience. Of choosing Highlands and US 50 as a priority intersection. During workshop two, the stakeholders met and traveled to each of these 10 priority areas to identify safety issues and possible recommendations. So workshop two took place on January 25th, which was only five days. After nine-year-old Ella conscious was struck and killed. Crossing US 50 at Highlands. There was a significant time commitment asked of the stakeholders and I've been really impressed with the level of participation and quality contributions. From, from every organization on this list and they really did make, make the plan better. So let's talk about the, the safe system approach. There's a lot on this slide. So, so let's walk through it. Let's start over on the right outside the circle. Humans make mistakes. If we know this, then we also know the making roads only for ideal conditions does not take into account all the mistakes people make. And can make the road more dangerous. Humans are vulnerable. We are not invincible. The faster we travel in our cars, the more deadly it becomes to make a mistake. And we all make mistakes. Responsibility is shared. This one's perfect for US 50 along Carson City and Lyon County. It's, it's Campo's responsibility to plan. For transportation and land use changes. It's Endot's responsibility to build roads that are safe. Efficient and meet the needs of all users and it's local agencies responsibility to provide support for safety initiatives and voice the concerns of the people. And it's the sheriff's responsibility to enforce speed, reckless driving, aggressive driving, drunk driving. It's the community's responsibility to speak about issues that they care about. And it's the drivers, the individual driver's responsibility to drive the speed limit. It really does take everyone. Deaths and serious injuries on the road are not inevitable. They are unacceptable. If you think deaths and serious injuries on the roadways are inevitable, you throw up your hands and believe there's nothing you can do. To solve this problem. But if you believe that deaths and serious injuries on the roads are unacceptable, you begin to find proven effective methods to prevent deaths and serious injuries. Redundancy is crucial. So a speed sign alone will not slow down. Well, we'll slow down some. But narrower lanes, medians, lights will slow down even more people on the road. It takes, it also takes people choosing to drive the speed limit. And slower speeds make the mistakes people make less deadly. So let's talk about proven safety countermeasures. In 2008, the federal highway administration began speaking about infrastructure oriented safety treatments and strategies. These are chosen based on proven effectiveness and the benefits that could reduce serious injuries and fatalities on the American highways. This became known as the proven safety countermeasure initiative. And this list has been updated over the years based on the effectiveness of the safety countermeasure. Local road safety plans in and of themselves are a proven safety countermeasure. Within the local road safety plan, we have crash reduction factors, which are estimations on how many deadly. And serious injury crashes are reduced based on the implementation of that countermeasure. There's information sheet for one of these proven safety countermeasures for all of them. In the local road safety plan, from lighting to roundabouts to median barriers to pedestrian hybrid beacons. There are 28 proven safety countermeasures in all, and these can be key to understanding and prioritizing safety infrastructure and implementation. So let's start digging into some of the data. On the left is a chart of the fatal and serious injuries within Campo. The purple bars indicate total crashes. And on average, from 2018 to 2022, you can see the total number of crashes are decreasing. And if we look at the red and the yellow lines along the graph, the yellow line represents serious injury crashes and the red line represents fatal crashes. Even though the total number of crashes is decreasing, the number of serious injury and fatal crashes remains high. Earlier this year, I got a call from the Healthy Communities Coalition. And they were meeting with safety stakeholders, including the Office of Traffic Safety, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, the Lyon County Commissioners. Local businesses, Nevada Highway Patrol and Endot. Endot provided analysis on the first mile of Lyon County within Mount House. And on the right, you'll see some of that. Within the last five years, there have been three deaths within this one mile. All of these deaths have been pedestrians. There is no pedestrian infrastructure in Mount House, no crosswalks, no lighting, no sidewalks. So let's look at the chart underneath. So the first column shows you the crash rate type. There's a PDO or property damage only, there's injury, there's fatal, and there's total crash rates. In the next column, you'll see the crash rate for US 50 and Mount House. Next is the state average on the same type of roadway. The final column shows the percent change in crash rates between Mount House and the state. This stretch of US 50 and Mount House. The property damage only crash rate is 24.21 higher than the state average. US 50 and Mount House injury crash rate is 47.49% higher than the state average. US 50 and Mount House fatal crash rate is 117% higher than the state average. This is extremely alarming. This chart shows fatal crashes by emphasis area. To reduce fatalities, it's important to understand the similarities and causal factors that may have contributed to that crash. 21 of the 35 fatal crashes happened at intersections. This includes signalized and unsignalized intersections. So intersections impair driving. Older drivers and speed are all factors of fatal crashes within Campo and that includes that this Lyon County portion of Campo. This is a map of the distribution of fatal and serious injuries crashes within the Lyon County portion of Campo. And on the left are the types of crashes. So blue, these are angle crashes, green indicates head-on crashes. Yellow are non-collision crashes and these range from cars that were in a single vehicle crash or ran off the road or the median. But it also includes pedestrian deaths. Orange indicates rear end crashes. And over on the right are indicators of fatalities in red and serious injury crash locations in yellow. There's a pattern of higher crash density near where residential areas meet US 50 and it's because that's where, that's where people are. That's where they're going. So like I said, on January 25th, stakeholders visited all of the 10 corridors and intersection, including Highlands and US 50. And some of the key issues identified. Of course, were the fatal crash that, that just happened there. We noticed that there was no lighting. There was heavy traffic. There was limited sight visibility on left turns from Highlands onto US 50. And, and there's these three intersections that feed into US 50 very close to each other. Linehan Road on the north, Red Rock Road and Highlands Drive. And US 50 has five lane cross-section with a two-way left turn lanes and no access control. These are the recommendations from the local road safety plan for Highlands and US 50. They include installing a crosswalk with islands and a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Adding lighting. Rehabilitating the pavement in the shoulder area. Conducting a speed study and enhanced speed reduction zone signs. Install advanced street signs and overhead speed limit signs. And a speed study has been conducted by Endot as. As we discussed, noting that 340 crossings were captured by LIDAR in 10 days and several conflict points. A roundabout is a possibility, which limits left turn lanes, makes it easier. To merge onto US 50 or what, what are called J-turns and examples on the, the bottom right here. J-turns are an example of what is a reduced conflict intersection. It allows vehicles to turn right, merge and the option of making a channelized left turn in the opposite direction or in whatever side street they need to turn down. Now let's begin talking about the US 50 East Carson Complete Streets Corridor Study. So US Route 50 is, is an interesting corridor. US 50 was created in 1926, part of the original US highway system. It's an Endot owned road, also known as the Lincoln Highway. It runs through Carson City and Lyon County in the portion that we'll talk about today. It's a US bike route across the state and leading across the country and. It's a critical urban freight corridor from I-580 to State Route 341. The limits of the study were from I-580 to Highlands Drive and Mount House. Of our phase one. One of our goals was this study was to make safety and multimodal recommendations for Endot's upcoming repaving project in 2027. So the team identified. Four corridor goals. Identify improvements to enhance safety for all corridor users, plan and deliver roadway safety and traffic projects. That meet the needs of local residents, commuters and business owners. Improve multimodal connections between residential areas, essential services and recreational opportunities. And identify improvements that balance mobility needs with business access and economic development objectives. The US 50 corridor study looked at crashes along the whole corridor segment. The, the local road safety plan again focused only on Highlands and US 50. The intersection movements are a factor of the majority of crashes along US 50, as you can see from the heat map where. The yellow indicates a higher crash density and the blue indicates a lower crash density. And again, there's, there's more discussion within the plan itself on, on the safety data. So Campo reached out to the public through an online survey. We did a press release, a fact sheet. We reached out through the website. And we continued to meet with stakeholders throughout the plan. Staff and the consultant led a business walk of every business along the corridor. I spoke with the Mount House Citizen Advisory Board Committee on March 5th, which was attended by over a hundred people. There were 940 responses to the US 50 corridor study and, and some of the highlights. And are displayed on the screen. So 34% of the people who responded to the survey traveled US 50 daily. 27% traveled several times a day. 99% of the people who travel on US 50 drive. However, there's also people who walk bicycle or, or carpool. And 29% of the people travel the corridor for work. 25% of the people are mainly shopping. When asked what the biggest problem with US 50 is, 44% of the people said traffic congestion and reliability. 41% of the people said crashes and traffic safety were the biggest problem. 71% of the people wanted to encourage the safe and efficient flow of traffic and 29% preferred to enable convenient business access points. Because of the survey and the postcards we sent out, we sent out over 4,000 postcards. I got many, many phone calls and emails. I got many, many phone calls and emails. I tracked them and they're detailed in the back of the plan. Please, please check them out. The number of comments we received from the survey along with the emotional impassioned Citizen Advisory Board presentation on March fifth is a reason why I am presenting to this board today. I'm not going to read all these comments, but this remains the focus of the residents in Mound House. They want lights. It's it's really dark at night. There there's no safe crossing, but yet they see people crossing. It's hard to turn left. They they see very few openings when they when they turn left. Here, here are more quotes. Now, when I I spoke to the Mount House Citizen Advisory Board on on March fifth, I mentioned that Campbell would be signing a pledge for zero fatalities by twenty fifty. I'd also mention that the crash statistics in in Mound House. One resident asked me, if three people every five years are dying, how many people is that before we reach twenty fifty? How many more people have to die? We need to do something now. Ella's mother was was also at that meeting. Ella's mother Rosie said this about Ella. She was extremely caring about everyone. So one of the reasons that I'm motivated to get out of the community and I'm pushing, they were pushing for a stoplight is because I know that's that's something she would want. You know, she always stood up for others and now it's my turn. It's our turn to stand up for her. One Mount House resident made an appointment with me on a Friday, drove over to our office in Carson City and talked about innovative safety strategies like glow-in-the-dark striping that they're they use in Australia. She she also gave me some of the presentation from a two thousand and Endot Mound House project, which proposed some safety infrastructure. This community really cares about traffic safety. So some of the issues that were identified with the US fifty corridor study include operations, traffic congestion, reliability concerns, level of service. There is relatively high crash rates. We're concerned about safety. We also want to look at access management. There are thousands of driveway access points, each one resulting in a high potential for conflict. We want to reduce those conflict points. We looked at multimodal aspects where there's inconsistent facility presence and type. So there's there's not continuous sidewalks. We looked at equity, resiliency, sustainability. We looked at disadvantaged populations and how they're affected by the lack of viable travel options, hide the high crash rate, emissions and heat impacts. So these are some of the key recommendations for Highlands and US fifty from the US fifty corridor plan phase one. To install a pedestrian hybrid beacon, new intersection lighting, pavement resurfacing. These again were from the Local Road Safety Plan and the US fifty corridor study is supporting that. Further study, the reduced conflict intersection for compatibility with a pedestrian hybrid beacon and the potential pedestrian refuge islands where a pedestrian can cross half of the street and only stop that one portion and then cross the next half. So that it's they're not crossing that seventy feet all at once. We looked at speed safety cameras just for the purpose of enlightening staff to how traffic is is moving and traveling. Changeable message signs alerting drivers to where there's congestion at. Key recommendations specific to Mound House include a speed policy with digital message signs, variable speed limits, improved data collection, possible mid-block crossings. How do we get people across US fifty in a safer way? Pedestrian hybrid beacons, median curbs and internalization of of curves, making left turns safer onto US fifty, intersection geometry. An example of what what one of those changeable message signs would be is on the far right the top. And a pedestrian hybrid beacon, we don't have any in Nevada yet. But that's what it looks like. They have been installed in other states. And again, they are proven safety countermeasures. So Campbell has been coordinating with with Endot on the US fifty corridor for this study and for the Local Road Safety Plan. Endot owns and maintains US fifty throughout the study area. Endot is in design of a pavement preservation and safety improvement project between the I five eighty interchange and Deer Run Road in Carson City. Some of the study recommendations being incorporated from the US fifty quarter study included the replacement of existing roadway surface, turn lane channelization and drainage improvements. They're going to work on the multi-use path, pedestrian facilities and ADA improvements. And that construction is planned for quarter two of twenty twenty seven. Endot lighter data conducted a traffic safety study in the spring of twenty twenty four, which showed three hundred and forty pedestrian crossings at Highlands and US fifty and six hundred and fifty near crash vehicle-to-vehicle conflicts in ten days. Fatal crash rate in Mound House is one hundred and seventeen percent higher than the state average on the same kind of road. What are the next steps? What are Campbell's steps? So the US fifty East Carson Corridor Study Phase Two is is coming up. Campbell extended the boundary of Phase Two from I five eighty to State Route three forty one to include all of Mound House. We want to continue to coordinate with Lyon County and and with Endot. Campbell staff want to continue to talk to you about the safety concerns from the Mound House community along this extremely important corridor. And we also would like to talk about a possible Safe Streets and Roads for All project. Over the next six months about the policy, sorry, a Safe Streets and All grant application for safety infrastructure. So Campbell staff is is more than willing to help apply for the grant. However, Campbell cannot supply the local match. Endot has indicated that funding may may be available for the match, but likely it's it's not all of the full amount, meaning Lyon County would need to provide some matching funds for the project. And I can tell you that a safety project like this with three agencies coordinating on safety infrastructure plan along an old highway can be very successful. Campbell would like to keep talking with Lyon County to discuss transportation planning issues and begin to address safety concerns along the roadway with your help. I'm here today because over the course of of completing these two plans, Lyon County residents just kept contacting me to speak about transportation issues. Public participation is is one of these core planning elements that transportation planners just really subscribe to. And through this continued contact, I became aware of how important transportation planning could be to the future of Western Lyon County. And I'd like to keep the door open with the Lyon County Board of Commissioners to to keep discussing transportation planning and the safety of Lyon County residents. And again, I I appreciate your time today to listen to Campbell's plans. Thank you.
Boy, it just seems like every every month we get somebody from the roads come in, Endot, different speaker, everything else. It's great that you got all that information. Works really great toward developing a perfect boulevard, but this is a state highway. So all those things that you said could be used in a different, all your, all your data could be used in a different way, the direction that that I personally want to see is keeping that as open and create it into a freeway standard, not into a boulevard. So we had studies for going for baggage roads, frontage roads. You're right, intersections cause problems. We eliminate intersections. We got to go for its access management. And you mentioned that briefly. But when you said about the roads, we have to have grade separations, that type of thing. We have interstate commerce, interstate commerce and connectability between the communities. That's what that is for. That's not I I noticed that everybody else has got their input in there, but there's nothing input from other people. It's just in that one area. I don't know how healthy Community Coalition is speaking for us. This is the board. This is you you said that they they came to you. They should be coming to us for for these different things. I look at it. Higher speed limits is what I'd like to see. I'd like to see go to freeway standards, frontage roads, baggage roads. I'm talking to Endot probably once a week. I talked to the Director of Endot, Tracy, just last week, and I'll have another meeting. All these safety plans that you guys are coming, these recommendations, I wouldn't approve any of them. It's not going in the long-term direction. I do like what you're trying to accomplish. And that's to end the in the problems that we're having. But I think it's not to create a boulevard. We've seen how good that didn't in Carson, create a boulevard through there. You can't even get through Carson. And every time that it happens, they put in the freeway later where we can preserve ours now. We don't got another place to put a freeway. So I'd like to go that direction. Roundabouts, you've mentioned roundabouts possibility. So Endot came to us and said promoted roundabouts in Silver Springs area. No, no deaths at all. That data is only as good until the deaths, right? As soon as they put those two in, two in the state and about happen right there. So I'm not, it just seems like you're going the wrong direction. I don't know, in my opinion. Me, it's a freeway. It should go from highway to freeway. There was a study done in twenty twenty two, I think it was, or twenty one, where and it was during COVID. So what they said was is not to go to the boulevards, not to decrease the speeding. It actually was a study by Endot to to go to the next level up, which is completely different than what you're presenting. We got to get on the same same page here. It's a freeway. It's a highway now to become a freeway, in my opinion.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Keller. I think as part of our US fifty Phase Two, we know that Endot did a study back in twenty ten in Mound House. We want to figure out what happened to that and and what those recommendations. Those need to be incorporated into that study as well, because I think you're right. In the long term, we need to look at the solutions for traffic movement from point A to point B. This for Phase One for US fifty and Local Road Safety Plan was looking at the immediate short-term needs. But there are long-term needs and that is something we need to address and plan to address as part of Phase Two, looking at what are what happened to that frontage road concept? What is the long-term vision? How does that tie into the US fifty area in Dayton? How does that tie into I five eighty and things like that?
I can kind of go a little bit on that, because there was a frontage roads and baggage roads because of the we didn't have enough room on the on the highway to do all frontage roads because of the encroachment of the businesses too close, no right away. So they were doing baggage roads, which would have been more funding because that becomes a county road, not a state highway road and and some of that stuff. But we also had USA Parkway come through at the same time. So that funding went, some of the highway funding went through there because it made more sense. But that also was put in there because we were trying to move truck traffic through, especially windy times during the West Shaw Valley, so they can keep getting through. So we're trying to increase truck traffic. We've got a bunch of stuff going on in Silver Springs area, industrial, that is going to increase the truck traffic immensely. And now you're trying to create a boulevard. The first thing they look for economic development is is the, they don't want to stop at any stoplight, right? And we're trying to develop the county and this is going to stop us in as far as getting truck traffic through. So their site locations aren't going to be in Lyon County. They're going to be in Story County and other other areas. So there's so much more to this. It's got to be a highway standard. I don't want to go backwards. I want to go forward. So.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I mean, I think part of the reason we 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 welcome the opportunity to speak to the commission is to hear commissioners' feedback and and incorporate that going forward.
Thank you.
You know, I have to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for being here. I I appreciate it. I hope this becomes kind of like an annual thing or a little more often than every few years. The only comment I have, I mean, I've I I've been through this and since I've been through this, I'm not going to regurgitate everything. But the Phase Two study, he said it's going to go to three forty one. We need to get out to chaves. We need to get the entire Lyon County portion of Campo studied. Yeah, I know Endot's doing it. Yeah, they got a pavement presentation, preservation project coming, I believe in twenty twenty six. You know, that's still not early enough, but I understand how government is slow, but but we really do need to stand out all the way out to the all the Lyon County portion of of Campo. But I do want to thank both of you for your increased focus on the Lyon County part of Campo. You know, i- it's very important. I'm kind of curious about the the makeup of the of the Campo board. Is that based on population or how was that based and has it been changed since two thousand and three?
It's based on population. That was how it was created and the makeup of the board has not changed since two thousand and three as the size. The the footprint of Campo hasn't changed since two thousand and three, but the population has shifted around a little bit. I think when we do, every time there's a census, we review the population in the different areas. And there wasn't the need to to change anything at this point, but each every ten years it should be looked at and reviewed to see does the population threshold warrant a change in the membership of people?
Right, because Lyon County and even Douglas County are growing faster in Carson City in population. That's why I'm getting, thank you guys. Appreciate it. And tell your mother hi for me.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here and accepting our criticism and questions. I just have to say that in nineteen seventy one, I had a traffic accident investigation class. Nothing's changed. Congestion, more accidents, speed kills. Same same items that you're covering here today fifty years ago. As population goes up, we have problems. So we get back to what Commissioner Keller said. We've got to compensate for the population by having the next stage up and design, whether that's freeway or limited access or whatever we can do to keep the traffic flowing and keep our people safe. I appreciate you coming and giving us the briefing today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't mean to be confrontational to you guys. I appreciate you guys coming and everything else. It's just it's been frustrating on my part because we constantly are having Endot come in and everything else. As far as that study, I believe it was your mom that was on that worked on that. And also she has the background of the USA Parkway because her and Governor Givens is the ones that started that process back in, I think, two thousand and eight is when we had Governor sign off on that USA Parkway. So there was a lot of more information there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Jacobson has a comment.
Oh, can I show Jacobson? I keep forgetting on the screen here.
No, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I just wanted to thank our presenters here today and regardless of the solutions, it is refreshing to see the data that you've collected. And we share obviously similar concerns with that Highway fifty corridor. So I know that we're we will support each other with the concerns that we have, the solutions. It just, it's a frustrating timeline for us all for sure. So I do appreciate your time and sorry I was not there to thank you personally.
Okay. Why don't we get Tony and Sarah? And then we'll take a quick break after her presentation.
Good morning.
How you doing?
I'm I'm sorry. Can you please read that item into the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. For a presentation-only report from Tony and Sarah with South Lyon Medical Center on their grand award from twenty twenty four Renowned Health National Fitness Campaign for the Construction of an in-outdoor fitness court. There you go.
Thank you. Tony and Sarah with South Lyon Medical Center. Thank you very much for the time. I will respect your findings. But our community has been given an opportunity that is not usual in rural areas. We were contacted several months ago by Renowned Health, who is the Nevada State Representative that's doing the National Fitness Campaign for the outdoor courts. We were able to apply for a fifty thousand dollar grant that we have awarded. The hospital is committed to putting Um the hospital is committed to putting fifty thousand dollars into this project. I have Gloria Cox. Available. She is the partnership development manager with the National Fitness Campaign. And I think that Erin has a short video that explains the court. Gloria, are you talking?
I'm here. Okay. Hey, good morning. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time. I was just going to see if the video would play. Um while we're waiting to see if that'll come up, I just wanted to. Talk a little bit about the hard work that Tony's done in going through the qualification process for the available grant funding in Nevada. We do work with renowned health. They are the state sponsor of National Fitness Campaign. And we work to build outdoor fitness courts and a community wellness program to impact health outcomes and communities across the country. Uh we started this in twenty eighteen. We welcomed our five hundred healthy community this year, and we're on track to have about a thousand folks join us. By the end of next year. So we're very excited to have the opportunity to work in collaboration with South Lion Medical Center. Uh they have a great site at Bridge Street Park, which Tony's going to talk about here in just a minute. But does it if we're not going to get the video, then what I'll do is share my screen and run through a quick presentation if that's okay with you guys.
Um the video is shared with with Erin as county manager, and I think she can share it for us.
Okay, great.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managin, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy nine when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the twenty first century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives. So that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganers, uh we as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy. That they want to provide. World class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes and challenges in clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. The new programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the fitness court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled. Introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. We're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come. Present it to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost one point two million members across Michigan. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free. Health and wellness opportunities for our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools, building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world class fitness free.
All right. Well, thank you so much for sharing the video. I appreciate it. That gives you a really good overview of what we do at National Fitness Campaign. If it's okay with you, I'd like to share my screen and give you just a little bit more context. Um you may have to give me permission to do that. And we've got a little bit of a presentation we can run through just to, you know, answer some more questions. So I think we've got that going here. Hopefully you guys can see this. Okay. Um can you see some folks on a fitness court here?
Yes, Gloria, we can see.
Okay, great. So this is a fitness court launch party. This is something that we organize and execute with the community, and our goal is just to make sure. That everybody knows this is open. It's available. It's there for them, and we want to reduce the barriers to improving your health in the community. We, as you saw in the video, we're the largest public private wellness partnership in the country. We work to build healthy communities. Everything we do is around improving health outcomes. We have really what we would call a crisis of sedentary lifestyle in our country, especially with our youth. We have about twenty five percent of our teens, high school age and up. Who actually get the recommended amount of exercise. Um it's my understanding that the community really has a lack of amenities for this age group. And we really believe that the fitness court and the wellness campaign associated with it can specifically speak to those kids. We have the phone app, which of course is their language. Um and so we really want to, you know, make sure this is available. We work with healthcare organizations across the country to build our grant funding. In Nevada, uh renowned health is our state sponsor. We're so excited to have them on board. And really, we're trying to just improve health outcomes by changing the built environment and through healthy infrastructure planning with the fitness court. Now, the fitness court is actually the centerpiece of our community wellness program. So it's not just that infrastructure. There's a toolkit of services that we wrap around the fitness court. That make it a wellness program. We have the mobile app that is free. It's always going to be free to the community. You can download it right now and check it out. It's going to tell you where to find your nearest fitness court. It has health trackers on there for your health. And a whole library of classes and programming based on your goals and ability, whether you're fourteen or you're eighty five or ninety. Uh there's something for everybody on here, and then a lot of other support services to really help us build out the project. So the fitness court, which you see here and you saw in the video. Is actually about half the size of a tennis court. So it's a compact footprint, but it accommodates up to twenty eight people at one time. So it really is a community wellness hub. It's a place for people to get together in the community, be outside in the fresh air and sunshine. And improve their health outcomes. We want to push back on statistics. Around cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and high blood pressure, and we really believe this can be a part of the answer to that. So I'm going to let Tony talk about the site, which is at Bridge Street Park. Um I just wanted to mention that Tony's done a lot of work here. Uh they were awarded the fifty thousand dollar grant. There's also a pledge for fifty thousand dollars from the um the board and the house center. And then they've also worked with a few other local funding partners to help build funding. We are still seeking about seventy five thousand dollars to complete the project this year. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony and let her talk about the site. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gloria, very much. The footprint of the court is thirty eight by thirty eight. We are proposing to put it in the park that we maintain on Bridge Street. Um part of the the center of the grass, we put the fort. Um we still would have benches and shade. Um it would be open twenty four hours a day. We do have light there. It is. Uh maintained by our maintenance, and it would be patrolled also. I know there's concerns every time you put in anything for vandalism, and I think. Keeping it in that area would keep it. I know that one of the exciting things is there's really nothing for the kids. They are not allowed to go to anytime fitness um during the summer. I don't know if they have a lot of weightlifting or opportunities. You know, this is something that's geared for any age. Um we're excited. We can use it for our residents and long term care. Um the senior center is not far from it. Maybe we can encourage some participation with our seniors as well. So I'm I thank you. We are looking for support. Any recommendations, any ideas for support would be appreciated.
Question?
I like the the footprint of it and everything. Uh. What caught me off guard there was the QR code that you have on there that where you can go to find out what. Power thing works. Do you guys work with physical therapy? I mean, like from people recovering from stuff, because I had a knee surgery. And I had to do physical therapy, and I had to drive into parks to do. Uh schedule it all and everything else. And I think I could have done everything that they asked me. At that place and been.
We do have physical therapy. Mike took in spins. Our therapist has been with us for over twenty years. So yes, and and there are definitely um. Different movements on there that benefit rehab. So he's excited as well. There's a lot of those things on there that I can tell you. I I don't know that any of us can do that.
Yeah, if there if there's a way we could. If we could get a thing for physical therapy for different. Types of recovery that we could just sit there and go, okay, we got to go through this. That would be fantastic.
And I think that's the ambassador program that they're talking about. I know that Danny Villalobos is one of my practitioners. And he is very excited because um he is definitely into physical fitness. And they have special training where they can actually lead people into the the safety and. I think it offers a great opportunity for our community. I wish we could do one in every community. I know they're limited to how many we can do. Um this was a a. Unexpected opportunity for our area um from our relationship with renowned. So we we have committed. A space and area to do it, and we've committed fifty thousand um of the hospital. Understanding that we should all be promoting wellness.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um what kind of financial support are you requesting? And is the city of Yarrington also contributing?
So um I have talked to members of that. Financially, they don't believe they are in support of it. But like many of us, um I I have support from many different entities, however limited funding. I do have funding from several different entities, Battleborn Medivac, who is our new uh. Helicopter Transport Emergency Transport Service. But you know, I have, I think I have verbal support from quite a few entities. Financially, um. That's the more difficult. I we've done applications to Walk Room Foundation. We've done applications to HUD base. So I'm looking for any recommendations or suggestions. I think it would be a great place, you know, for the kids.
I think the uh the equipment looks somewhat. Safe from vandalism, being concrete, a lot of heavy duty steel and cables. Uh my concern with everything in the county is. Monitoring for vandalism. So when we do get this thing moving, I would love to see some cameras. Where we can, okay, outstanding.
The area, there's cameras and lights, and then our maintenance goes around. I mean, I still have the opportunity. We had a car taken from our physical therapy parking lot, so. Although it's on camera, you know, I can still, we understand that.
I just. Especially in some of the parks where we've had a significant amount of damage. So uh that would be a fantastic addition. To our area. I think it's a it's a great idea. Uh I'd like the fact that there's. Not really any removable parts. Everything seems to be solid and. Going to stay where it needs to be for everybody to exercise though. Thank you. Appreciate the input.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, um. Take five. We're going to take five minutes. We have a ten thirty from probably DC with a porter group. So let's be back in our seats at. Ten twenty nine. So do we have the Porter Group on? It's there.
We're we're good to go on on our end. Oh. Um I'm sorry.
It's going to jump to six E real quick because, you know, they're. Run. On our dime here. I don't see them. Do you, uh? Mr. Haskin? I don't.
I'll I'll check in on that.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to the nine thirty time certain.
Ten thirty.
Okay. Time certain nine thirty nine thirty for possible action, approve a resolution to transfer the unused private activity bond cap. To Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Thank you, uh Chair Hockaday and members of the mission. For the record, my name is Sean Hughes. Sir, I'm Director of Finance for Nevada Rural Housing Authority. The mission of Nevada Rural Housing Authority is to promote, provide, and finance affordable housing opportunities for all rural Nevadans. Uh I appreciate your time this morning to be able to talk about the private activity bond cap. Or PABC, as I'll refer to it throughout the rest of this presentation. Since two thousand and six, Nevada Rural Housing has provided two point four billion dollars in in mortgages to rural Nevadas throughout the state. Um in addition, about sixty four. Or about sixty five million dollars in down payment assistance has been provided during that time, specifically to Lion County. Um Lion County has transferred twenty three point four million dollars, and I should have prefaced this. It'll give you a bunch of numbers. We're just a moment here. Uh but twenty three point four million dollars in private activity bond cap transfers to Nevada Rural Housing. Uh during that time since two thousand and six, there's been three hundred and seventy four million dollars in mortgages provided to eighteen hundred residents of of Lion County. And seven point nine million in estimated federal tax savings through the mortgage certificate credit program. In the last year, there have been forty four uh families in Lion County service. Uh with fourteen million dollars in mortgages. Four hundred thousand dollars in down payment assistance. And six hundred thousand dollars in tax uh tax credits, which is which essentially provides families with more money each month. Uh to either go towards their mortgages or simply to address the other costs that they that they are that they need to address. What the private activity bond. Cap specifically helps us with is being able to either provide. Uh mortgages where we finance those mortgages through a bond program or also through the mortgage credit certificate program. Uh beginning July twenty second, so just about ten days ago. We were able to uh issue a bond where we have opened it to all of rural Nevada. Uh Lion County, we have three different families from Lion County. Uh or three different households from Lion County uh that have been approved for loans. For nine hundred ninety thousand dollars and about four hundred thousand dollars in down payment assistance. That's at a set rate of six point one seven percent. Um and so we encourage you, if you know of anybody who is looking for a loan or mortgage right now. Uh to please see us. It's uh set up for first time home buyers. Um and also veterans and others qualify within that in that area. But that is a specific use. That we are doing with those funds for the private activity bond cap. Um and I'd be happy to answer any questions that that you may have. We truly appreciate the partnership.
Commissioner's questions. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. No question. Uh thank you for being here. Um NHRA does beautiful work around the state. You know, I've been involved with you guys for a number, number of years. And fully support your program. And the only comment I have is you can tell Mr. Brewer, he's allowed to show up himself, too.
Okay, I will let him know.
Okay.
Mission recovery. Public comment? All right. I look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution to transfer the unused private activity bond cap. PABC to Nevada Rural Housing Authority, NRHA.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Harrison and second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Motion passes four zero. Uh Commissioner Jacobson had to go to the airport, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I see uh Mr. Bates is on from Porter Group. So uh time certain nine thirty for possible. Our presentation only, I should say. Um present presentation by Porter Group on federal lobbying efforts. Our presentation only, I should say, um, present presentation by Porter Group on federal lobbying efforts. Sir, you're up. And we have Mr. Porter also.
I think I was going to let Congressman Porter start off if if he's able to be unmuted.
Uh, I think some of my staff would rather I remain muted at times. I think I guess. Having been an elected official too long, they go, okay, John, you don't really have to talk, but I'm. I want to just say how proud we are of being a part of your team. Lyon County, all that you're doing. Uh, and thank you for your guidance, of course, in many areas and a special thank you. Uh, Andrew, as as you know, Andrew, we've gotten to know each other and through the team and through Brian and Chris and. Our team, uh, the success that Brian's going to share today really would not have happened. Uh, without your tenacity and your ability to capture what's important. And create that message as well to our federal delegation. So. Uh, again, honored, so honored to be a part of your team. Uh, really proud, Andrew, and all the work you're doing. And. I think many of you have had a chance to meet Brian, uh, Brian Bates, uh, to you, Brian, for all your hard work, but also sending best wishes from the rest of the Porter team. Uh, Chris Porter sends his best, uh, and certainly the rest of our team. We have eleven of us. Uh, we we have two folks in Nevada. We remain in Nevada Corporation. Out of Boulder City, uh, and our success is really tied to your success. And we couldn't do it without all of you. So thank you. Proud to, again, proud to be a part of the team. You know, Wes and I have enough stories on each other, so I won't pick on Wes today because he probably could embarrass me more. Uh, but again, thank you all, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian. Happy to answer any questions and. In this unique environment that we have here on Capitol Hill today. So thank you and thank you, Brian.
Yeah, so as he was saying, I was just going to go quickly over some of the successes that we've had with our CPF or Community Project Funding. Or the congressionally directed spending over the last year. Um, so I was going to start off with FY twenty-four. So these were the ones that were passed last March or April. Um, and we were very successful. We received just under six million dollars from the federal government for various projects. Uh, for the water main replacement, the Goshwater main replacement, uh, we've received two point five eight four million dollars. Uh, for the youth mobile crisis response team, we were able to receive six hundred and seventy-three thousand. For the respite program for seniors, four hundred eleven thousand. And the Miller Izzy intersection was two point two million. Uh, so we're very happy with that. And then continued success from this year. Um, so far, the House has passed all twelve of their appropriation bills out of committee. So we do have an idea of what was in there. Lyon County received two project funding through that. Um, we actually got above our requested amount for the. Uh, other half of the sewer main and manhole project. So this year we received two million dollars for the second half of the Dayton. Uh, water main project and then. Um, ninety thousand dollars from both the House and the Senate for the Lyon County Mobile Crisis Response Vehicle Project. And another six hundred thousand dollars for the Mound House Community Center Project. Uh, we're still waiting on the generator, but other than that, um, that's kind of. A concise idea for what we would be received this year. So in total, so far this year. Uh, we've received two point six nine. Uh, million dollars in in grant funding directly for projects. Um, those still do, those bills still do need to come together and pass through the full House and the Senate. Which we expect if there's a divided government at the end of the elections that they may do that before the end of the year. If it ends up being that one party controls both the House and the Senate and presidency, then it's looking more likely like. That will be pushed until, uh, the following congressional year so that the new Congress can can address those. Um, in addition to, and again, one of the big successes that we've had with this is the ability for you guys to come up with good projects. Um, one of the big things that we hear from the offices is that the better projects that we're able to help come up with. More that it helps them and the more the easier it makes for committee to accept them. So we definitely appreciate the hard work that Andrew and everyone has done on the back end of getting these projects together. And coming up with good ones. Um, additionally, on top of the CPF's, we've been working on the Lyon County lands bill. So so far we've had meetings with Rosen's office and Congressman Amade's office. In order to go over the details, we're just waiting to hear back from, um, Senator Catherine Cortez Masto's office. In order to determine. Um, who's going to be the main sponsor from the Senate side on that, but. Really, we haven't heard any major issues. The only concern that's been brought up is the. The low amount of wilderness, but. Once we explain kind of how much was given away in previous land bills, they they fully understand that. So, um, sorry if I was talking too quickly, but if if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them about. Uh, what federal efforts we've been working on.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, Commissioner Keller.
I I just had a comment. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Porter for showing up. I appreciate you showing up personally for these meetings, uh. And thank you, uh, Brian for the update. I really appreciate having this. I can't wait to see you in Washington. Uh, keep up the good work.
Commissioner.
Very kind. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I want to thank both you guys too and and Congressman, I won't tell any stories out of court, I promise.
Well, if I may, sorry, Commissioner, but you know, we've been friends probably almost thirty-five years. So there is a lot of stuff out there. So yeah, let's keep it between.
But, um, I I really want to just express my appreciation for the relationship that Lyon County has with with the Porter Group. Yeah, it is vital. It was something we were missing for years. And the proof is in the pudding. So thank you, guys, and keep my fingers crossed for the the three projects for this year. Especially, um, the community center. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for your input. Uh, we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing.
If I may conclude, just as the politician here. Uh, as Brian said so well and with Andrew's leadership. And if I can just take one more moment to express. How well respected you as well are a as a commission and individual members. Because, uh, the delegation is very aware and very much appreciative of what you're doing and is with any project. You need to have build that trust. And that relationship and you've done that really quite well. So again, keep. Keep doing what you're doing. Uh, invite any of these, the delegation, or if we can help you sometime. Uh, in August, which is today or into the fall during the election season. So with that, I'll be. Sit down and just say thank you. We're we're proud of all of you and and really so pleased to be a part of your team.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, uh, last time we had the NACO convention, uh, here in Nevada one. Uh, Chris showed up for the NACO convention. Is he going to be here this this year in September?
That's the plan. Yes, I'm finding that people would rather see Chris than me, so I've sent Chris wherever I can. We're and but you know my our our and my support. For NACO and again, League of Cities as well, which we'll set aside for a moment, but. I am a firm believer in the support that the Nevada Association of Counties provides in Nevada and also the the national platform. So I encourage your continued membership and. I learned a lot of that from Wes, but again, that's all I'm going to say, Wes. Thank you all.
And I'll be out there as well for that one this year.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. We will move on to fourteen A. Which I told Mr. Jones we would work on. Um, for possible action to approve the request. To to approve the request for a zoning map amendment from Mark and Cheryl Jones to amend the zoning map designation from Title Ten District of. RR five, which is fifth rural residential district, twenty acre minimum. To agriculture in accordance with the master plan designation. At. The, uh. Missed that. We've got a problem here. Master plan designation of agriculture on twenty-one point six acre parcel. At sixty Artesia Road generally located at the northeast of the intersection of Madison Way and Artesia Road in Wellington. APN zero one zero dash zero eight one dash forty-three PLZ dash twenty twenty-four dash zero eleven. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. So summary of the request from the Title Ten Zoning District of. Fifth Rural Residential District with a twenty acre minimum to agriculture. For a parcel located in Smith Valley, the west, uh, the left map is our vicinity map. And then zooming in, uh, to. Uh, show the parcel on the right map, you can see the location of the colony ditch and Artesia Road. And then a little more detail, uh, the parcel is located at the northeast corner of Madison Way and Artesia Road. For the, uh, Sessors Records, the site is twenty-one point six acres in size. The existing conditions on the site include, uh, two structures, uh, both single family residences. Uh, one being the primary at over five thousand square feet and the accessory dwelling unit at fifteen hundred square feet. As well as some barns, outbuildings, uh, wellhouses, a wellhouse and fences, um, and some ditch. Some ditches along the fences as shown in the applicant's materials. Uh, these were pictures were were provided by the applicant. Can see one of the larger outbuildings in the left picture, um, and then the primary structure on right. So this property is probably familiar to you, uh, in its request for a zone change, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the planning commission approved the request to change the zoning. From that twenty acre minimum to rural residential to five acre minimum. July of of twenty-three, the. The planning commission did make a recommendation to this board for approval. Uh, the board, however, denied the request with a vote of three to two. On August third, twenty twenty-three. Uh, reading through the minutes of that meeting and of course, having attended it myself. Um, I did note some of the reasoning that was offered during that meeting for the denial of the request. Uh, notably the lack of consistency with the master plan destination of agriculture. The. Idea that there there should be a preservation of water in Smith Valley to be maintained for agricultural purposes. Uh, limited water available for a higher residential density that would have been possible where that previous zone change approved. And then discussion on the owner's lack of due diligence regarding water rights because part of the the cemental materials and findings for that. Previous request, uh, did mention some difficulty in obtaining the appropriate water rights. So now moving into this request today, um, we've got the two master plan designations here on the slide. Uh, the left side depicting the rural character district as these. Hope you for all of Smith Valley. And then on the right. The two colors of green and blue depicting green as agriculture for the master plan and blue as rural residential. Of course, you can note the, uh, the parcel being on the boundary of these two land use designations. Moving into the requested zone change, um, these images depict. The Title Fifteen districts, uh, as we discuss every time we we talk about a zone change. Many parcels in Lyon County still have, uh, expired zoning district names from Title Ten. Twenty eighteen, we adopted Title Fifteen with the zoning consistency matrix, which converts the districts. Uh, so the converted districts, which are the the development standards are applicable to properties. Uh, shown here in pink is the RR twenty district and then on the right is a request to agriculture zoning. And we'll kind of walk through some of the rationale now for, uh, staff's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation. Uh, the findings for a zone change, very first one and the most prominent one. Uh, and the first step that staff takes. Leads to look in chapter three, the land use chapter of our master plan. And we have this table that depicts the. Compatible zoning districts per the master plan. Uh, in this case, it seems rather self-evident agriculture and agriculture are absolutely compatible. But I think something that's sort of also depicted here that's not always the case. Is that the compatible Title Ten District. Noted in our master plan for the agricultural. Agriculture master plan designation would be the existing zoning today. Because in Title Ten, agriculture zoning didn't exist. So, uh, we did have discussions about the fact that this is the very first parcel. Uh, that has requested agriculture zoning, uh, since the adoption of Title Fifteen in twenty eighteen. In Title Ten. Properties of agriculture master plan, we received this this twenty acre minimum residential zoning. Because it represented the largest lot size and the lowest development potential. Were this property, if we were in a in a different setting, this property were to receive zoning today, it would of course receive agriculture. Uh, but as this table depicts. The equivalent zoning was the zoning it has today. So in other words, this is not much of a of a change at all. This is the same zoning it should have. Uh, further sort of showing this point, uh, the the image on the left is that zoning overlay with the parcels from our county GIS system. And then on the right, of course, an aerial image depicting the agricultural uses on so many of these properties that also have this residential zone. The findings for a zone change are found in chapter fifteen to twenty-five. Since there's only three, I will kind of run through. The highlights, uh, for how staff made the recommendation. Uh, the first finding again. Request consistency with the policies in the adopted master plan. Uh, land use policy one one, follow development patterns established in countywide land use plan that of course agriculture master plan agriculture zoning. Policy land use. Or one, uh, encouraging the continuation of an agricultural lifestyle in appropriate areas that of course is a finding that could be met by staff. Uh, finding B mentions in, uh, the the requirement for adequate public facilities. Uh, represented in in rural areas by, uh, existing roadways. And the ability, uh, by parcel size to. Drill a well and attain septic. Those qualities are met by this request. Uh, the parcels over twenty acres, the agriculture zoning district has a minimum size of twenty acres. So. I think just kind of. Following up on some of the discussions I had with the public. About, uh, the potential for future subdivision, that would not be the case here. So again, the minimum parcel size for agriculture is twenty acres. And then, of course, uh, emergency services are readily provided in Smith Valley. Uh, by the Mason Valley Fire Protection District and of course, Long County Sheriff's. Uh, the final finding regarding a zone change. Ask for confirmation of compatibility with the actual master plan adjacent uses. And as we've already sort of covered, uh, just in this presentation. The master plan matches and land uses. In those areas that are still used for agricultural purposes despite having the residential zoning. Um, are this finding is met as a result of that. Uh, if I just move back a bit here. To, um. This master plan designation, those blue areas, particularly right to the south, those are five acre parcels. Then. We can see them depicted here. But the rest of the parcels in pink are larger and the same size. Moving through the 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 history, this go around for the second request, the planning commission on July nine, twenty twenty-four did vote six, six zero. Uh, of course, Commissioner Jones, the applicant is here today, uh, did abstain from that vote. They recommended that. That approval to you today and the motion is here depicted on the courts available for questions. Thank you.
Questions? Any public comment?
Hello?
Oh, I thought you waved me off. Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, one comment, one question. Um, on your slide under the previous proposal. We left off the fact that there was overwhelming opposition by the neighbors and by the by the area.
My mistakes are, I'll include those types of things in the future.
And then, um, we we got an email from a a gentleman. Saying that if we change this, there may be. Possibility for additional additional ranch hand dwellings on the property. Is that true?
Uh, I don't know that that's true in any way. There's no, there's been no indication in the application of materials that that's the intent. And furthermore, um, farm labor housing, as it's actually termed in Title Fifteen. Does have requirements that the property. Has, uh, received tax deferments and can be confirmed as being used primarily for agriculture. So that that's not something we have any indication that.
And that still has to go through the the normal permitting process.
Absolutely, absolutely, with a condition.
Okay.
Wait, yes.
Anything further?
Those are, okay.
Nothing there. Won't miss you again. Any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll look for a motion. Commissioner Keller.
Based on. The findings of A, B, and C, I move that the board accounting commissioners approve the request from Mark and Cheryl Jones to amend the zoning. The findings of A, B, and C, I move that the board accounting commissioners approve the request from Mark and Cheryl Jones to amend the zoning map des- designation. From the title ten district of RR five. To agriculture in accordance with the master plan designation of agriculture on a twenty one point six. Acre parcel at sixty Artesia Road. Generally located to the northeast of the intersection of Madison Way and Artesia Road in Wellington, APN. Zero one zero, oh one, oh eight one forty three, PLZ. Twenty twenty four eleven.
Okay.
One second.
Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero and uh, again, Commissioner Jacobson has been excused for the afternoon. All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to the items. Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I want to thank the board for looking at this, uh. We, the big opposition to us last time was taking out agriculture land and water. And so my wife and I decided we will try to make this work one more time. And the best way to do this to work through this type of zoning. Uh, there will be no more residential. Areas built on that property of what exists today. Uh, that won't happen. I can give you that, that commitment to, to support. That was never our intention. Um, but uh, I want to appreciate, thank you for doing it. We're going to make this a, a new successful project, I think, and it'll bring credit to the uh, to the valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if you could please state your name for the record.
My name is Andrew. Mark Jones. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, have a safe trip. Item seven, presentation of awards and or recognition of accomplishments. We have any. Seeing none. We will move on to number eight. Commissioners and county manager reports. Uh, let's start with Commissioner Hendricks.
Uh, I met with Dr. Shail Holmes to gain an education on where. The funding comes from and where it goes in our human services department. Uh, attended the NACO, NACO Public Lands Meeting and the NACO Board of Directors and also the Dayton Valley Conservation District Meeting.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I also attended the NACO Board of Directors meeting for the last time. Um, one thing that we had again is NDOT. Yeah, uh, Tracy Larkin Thompson showed up and, and gave an overall presentation. I'm just not focused on Lyon County. But one, one point that she brought up that I didn't think about, because I, I asked her a question about. Getting some revenue from, from electric vehicles to help pay for, for road maintenance. And she, you know, they're, they're working on that through the legislature, but one point that she made, but the, the, the bigger problem she has right now is with the hybrids. Cause the, the hybrids, instead of getting gas every week, they get gas every month. You know, so that's something I hadn't even thought about, but that, that's something else, else to look at. And uh, we also approved the um, NACO B, at least four BDRs for NACO. I forwarded them to the county manager, so he has them. And. That's really all I have.
Commissioner Keller.
I too.
I too attended that meeting uh, with NACO and a couple of other things on there. Uh, we had a presentation from Nevada State Comptroller. Andy Matthews and he uh, led a discussion on local fiscal and budgetary. Budgetary transparency and they have a portal set up. So you can see all the transactions, total spending payroll and operating budget. Transactions. Also attended uh, the associated, association of counties legislative committee. And that was forward to the board that got approved our recommendations. And then also on the Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee, uh, attended that and Nevada Division of Minerals Administrator. Robin, probably gonna. Gig, Gig Larry, I believe is how you pronounce it. It's hard, hard to figure out. You, and also uh, Chase Mackmanera with the governor's office on BLM utility school. Utility scale solar program, programmatic environmental impact statements. And that's all I attended.
Okay. Um. I was more or less outrunning around quite a bit because of the two big rainstorms. Um, I appreciate uh. County manager Haskin coming over and picking me up for the landslides up in Hoy Canyon. Um, also other flooding areas with the two heavy, I mean, really heavy storms we had in Smith Valley. Uh, so that uh, we had damage here and there, but the road department came out and worked all day to get the road cleared back to Hoy Canyon so that our. Our residents could get in and out of that area and also uh, Walker River Irrigation District. Um. Was out there clearing out the uh, canals that were filled with mud. Uh, attended uh, meeting with uh, Conservation District on uh, some issues that they were having. And that's pretty much it. Uh. Lot of water, lot of damage, a lot of repairs, and I appreciate the county getting out there and getting things done like they did as quickly as they did, so. Thank you to the road department and for Mr. Haskin for being out there and getting things done also. We'll send you some. We had plenty. Go ahead.
All right. Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record, I'll keep my promise brief today. Um, today is moving day for the courts. They're moving back into the justice complex. Um, so there's still a few things they're wrapping up with the building, but uh, um, minor, minor, minor things. Um. So they are doing that. Some court sessions will still be held here depending, you know. Depending on uh, which court it is because they're still finishing up one of the courtrooms, but um. Just wanted to make the board aware of that. I toured it yesterday and it's fantastic. So. Very good. Very happy with the way that turned out. Uh, had a meeting with NDOT yesterday, their um, annual county workshop with county staff to talk about the various issues that um. With um. Within the county, mostly dealing with different projects and things. Obviously, highway fifty came up multiple times, but also um, stuff in the friendly area. So we'll be working with them. Um, kind of as a part of that, I, I plan on bringing forward an item or a series of items in the near future. Um, regarding putting together a policy statement, uh, or a position statement for um, Lyon County. On our highway system that runs through the county so that we have a very, very clear idea of. Which direction uh, the county would like to move in. Um, with regards to our various highways. So that we can um, provide that input to NDOT, the Campbell and other organizations that are working on those issues so that we're all on the same page. Um, and so that's something that um, I look forward to bringing forward. Probably in September, um, just so the board is aware. Um, still kind of working out some stuff and need to set up a meeting with NDOT. First, uh, just to kind of talk that through. And then the last thing, um, I wanted to make the board aware of is just the, some board vacancies that we have. Um, right now in uh, various citizen advisory boards. Um, so right now we have an opening for Central Lyon County Vector Control Board. We have one opening for the Dayton Regional Advisory Board. We have one opening for the Debt Management Commission, two openings for the Room Tax Board. Uh, three openings for the Smith Valley Park and Recreation Board and two openings for the Walker River Weed Control. So I'll announce those. We posted that, that, um, so. Please, if anybody knows, anybody that would be a good fit for those boards, have them submit an application and send it our way. That I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question.
Just a comment, uh, really looking forward to that policy statement for NDOT and get that on the books so that we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, elected official reports. Sheriff.
Uh, good morning. Yes, good morning.
Yep.
Brad Lyon County Sheriff for the record. It's been a, been a pretty busy week. A night in the country ended uh, Sunday morning. In the wee hours and uh, then everybody left. And I wanted to commend the Boys and Girls Club, uh, their staff, their board of directors and all the volunteers. That uh, made that event possible. Uh, they really did cater to law enforcement. Uh, gave us everything we needed to have a successful and safe event. And I would say our interactions with the public at that event were uh, for every one thousand positive interactions we had, there was one negative, so. Went really well. Uh, the sheriff's office saturated in the event. Um, but we still allowed everybody to have fun. It's a very good balance of having fun and uh, enforcing the law, so. Everything went good with the event, very positive. And they're working uh, a few kinks out with the new venue, so. Everybody went home safe. Uh, we did have a pursuit uh, that ended in the, the death of our suspect. And I just want to reiterate that uh, pursuing that suspect is not what pushed him. To the. The driver radically, he was doing that before. We got on his tail and began to pursue him and tried to end that pursuit. Uh, however, he did get a little out of control. Crashed his vehicle after we had already backed off a little bit once he was in a, a safe area, uh. Died on the scene. Our guys did. Attempt life saving efforts, pulled him out of the vehicle. The vehicle was burning, formed CPR, et cetera, but they're running service life, so. Uh, on another note, uh, we had a missing person. Few months back ago, started out, missing person in Fernley. Ultimately, she was found deceased and fouled. Our investigations uh, team worked that case uh, from the onset. They collected evidence in Colorado, Utah and Nevada and were able to apprehend the suspect. With the help of a couple of Utah agencies in Salt Lake City over the weekend. And the suspect went down easy. It's now, now we're waiting on extradition uh, back to the valley, so. Uh, it's an excellent job by our investigations unit. Uh, several of the other agencies involved, US Marshals, uh, Salt Lake City Unified Police Command and. The Utah County Sheriff's Office all looked at our report, our GPS mapping data of the suspect and said it's some of the best they've ever seen, so. Guys really put forth tremendous effort on that, uh, culminated with arrests. Other than that, it's, it's business as usual. What about our day?
Anything? And uh, we did have one injury, one deputy that was injured during that pursuit of the uh. Uh, fatality, but uh, how's the deputy doing? Okay?
Recovering well. He wasn't serious.
Okay.
His uh. Suspect head on in the vehicle, but uh. It's a very big, strong guy. Just sort of recovered.
Okay, I just want to make sure that uh, he's doing fine. All right, anything? Oh, Commissioner Henderson, I saw your finger this time.
At least it wasn't the middle one. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff Pope, I just want you to express my personal appreciation to all your deputies. You guys do a very good job, very professional. And it certainly appreciates.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other elected officials seeing none, we will move on to appointed official reports. Uh, nobody on it was, okay, yep.
Uh, Gavin Harrison, Lyon County Community Developmenter. Development Director, not a update, just wanted to say, uh, I guess, which questions the north area. Strange master plan, uh, will be moved to the August fifteenth being scheduled reasons, but I just wanted to bribe the board and update why that wasn't on this agenda. Thank you.
Anything? Oh, thank you for that. I believe that's all the appointed officials jumping up. Um, advisory board reports. Seeing nobody on Zoom and nobody jumped up here, we'll move on to consent agenda. The consent agenda action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine. It may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So, um, I'm gonna pull twelve C. And discuss that momentarily. Um, anybody else have anything they want to pull? Commissioners, public. If not, we will look for um, a motion on twelve A through G, pulling twelve C.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items twelve A, twelve B, twelve D to twelve G and pulling twelve C.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Uh, moving to twelve C for possible action approved July eighteen, twenty twenty four minutes. Uh, I just noticed on page four of the minutes. That it had Dressler Park and should have been Santa Maria Park. So uh, that change has already been made and uh, the minutes will be. Um. Signed with that correction. So any uh, comments from commissioners on twelve C? Any public comment on twelve C? If not, we will move to a motion for twelve C and um. I move to approve the July eighteen, twenty twenty four minutes with the correction made on page four. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Hockaday and second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We'll move on to. Regular agenda. Thirteen A for possible action approved up to one member to the Library Board of Trustees with a term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty eight. We have one. Application, Pat Avery. Any commissioner comments on that? Public comments? Yes.
Good morning, um, Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners, I'm Lynn Pringle, the director of Lyon County Library System. I just wanted to. Be here and ask some of the questions that you might have about this application.
Any questions? No, I guess this will be pretty simple. We'll move on with the emotion.
I move that we um, appoint Pat Avery to the Library Board of Trustees with the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Have your new member. And thirteen B for possible action approved to canvas the vote from the twenty twenty four special election per NRS two nine three dot three eight seven. Ms. Lindbergh.
Hi, Stacy Lindbergh for the record, is coming to canvas the special election and, and get on toward the general, so. Uh, the report looks a little different for you guys than our standard reports due to the fact that the, both of the offices are nonpartisan. So the reports may look a little different to you, but I wanted to set that out as well. You didn't get the breakdown of the different parties. So if you have any questions?
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
So uh. The Fernley City Council, the top two go on to the.
Yes.
To the thing. And how's it work on the GID?
The tie vote, which was unusual. I just got the legal opinion on that yesterday. We will actually take seven to the general versus the six that would have gone.
Any further questions up here? Any public input? Seeing none. Need to approve the canvas? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the canvas to vote for twenty twenty four special election for NRS two nine three dot three eight seven.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes four zero. Thank you. All right, we've already taken care of public hearings for fourteen A and we're going to go to fourteen B. For possible action to approve the request from La Casa Development for a tentative subdivision map for phase six of Gold Country Estates, creating twenty six single family residential lots. On four point nine three acres of a nine point three seven acre parcel with RMU, residential mixed use. Zoning located south of Dayton Village Parkway in Dayton, APN zero two nine dash seven six one dash zero eight. PLZ dash two zero two four dash zero two nine staff report. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, sent in. And for the moments following. Thank you. All right, Gold Country Estates, phase six in Dayton. We again have vicinity map on the left and zoom in on the subject parcel on the right. Note the location of the properties, both north and west of Highway fifty in Dayton and the location of the Smith's Shopping Center. Of projects approximately north of there. And then more specifically on the right, we can see the store all building. It's the outline of the entire parcel. It is notable that the project area is only four point nine three acres of the nine point three seven acre site. Uh these pictures taken from Google Earth have not uh been taken currently enough to show some of the multifamily townhome apartment development to the east of the the. Proposed project site. And then the surrounding area. Has already been developed uh by Mister Eddie Holt, our applicant. He was here today. Uh as part of previous phases of Gold Country Estates, which included both single-family and some multifamily uh development. Access is via Dayton Village Parkway to the north and Halai Drive to the south. Uh these pictures provided by the applicant uh depict some of the accesses and uh the current use for the site. As staging for uh ongoing construction, notably the aforementioned townhomes to the east of the sites. These pictures actually depict some of the brand-new infrastructure, again, already constructed. In previous phases of Gold Country Estates, including paved roadways. Uh in this case. A ditch and a sidewalk. A connection to all of the existing development will of course be required. Uh moving into the master plan designations, the character district for this whole portion of Lion County is suburban. Uh suburban character districts being characterized by the availability of public utilities. Um and in this case, uh many services. Uh available that aren't available in other places in Lion County. This location in Dayton does represent our our sort of densest. Uh most urban development with a shopping center and an higher density residential development. Uh the master plan designation likewise suburban, suburban residential. Zoning for the site is residential mixed-use. Uh these images predominantly show the conversion, as mentioned in the last item, through the consistency matrix. Uh the subject site uh in brown there and then also other phases of Gold Country Estates, also zone residential mixed-use. This is only district that does permit a wide range of uh residential types. And in the surrounding zonings, uh multifamily to the north. And community commercial there to the east, beginning the subject site highway. So we'll get right to the map. The green outline depicts this proposed phase uh with the lots uh divided and then access to the north. Uh to Dayton Valley Parkway. Then this uh image also shows previous phases of Gold Country Estates. There are twenty-six new lots proposed here uh with remainder lots uh left after the after the final map is recorded of three point one five and one point two eight acres. For future phases of Gold Country Estates. As previously mentioned, connection to existing roadways, utilities, and stormwater management is required. And would be addressed uh in the final map and site improvement stages. Uh this is the actual tentative map, again, just depicting of the actual parcels themselves. The range of size in the parcels between five thousand four hundred eighty-nine square feet. And six thousand six hundred thirty-three square feet. Uh it is notable that the RMU district does permit a parcel size down to forty-five hundred square feet. So. As evidenced by these sizes, developer has actually provided a bit larger than than he might have to have to. Uh the findings for a tentative subdivision map are found in chapter fifteen, six oh seven oh three of Lion County Code. Uh unlike the zone change, there are a number of findings that might make this presentation a bit too lengthy. So instead, I've sort of summarized the highlights of staff's findings. You can, of course, find more detailed analysis within the staff report. Uh the zoning permits, the parcel sizes and the parcel size and housing type proposed at being single-family residential. Connecting to existing development, connection to existing development is of course required. Adequate access and emergency services are in place. Uh existing accesses and roadways can support the traffic. Uh originally, Gold Country Estates uh envisioned. Uh more workforce housing and even a higher traffic count. Um that is actually proposed here. Part of the subdivision submittal requirements required a uh an update to traffic memo. So as each phase comes forward, we get a new update showing existing development. Proposed impacts. Uh and then, of course, connection to Highway fifty provides adequate access. Uh the planning commission did hear this item, uh July nine uh twenty twenty-four meeting and recommended. Uh approval seven zero in accordance with staff's recommendation. Uh again, Mister Eddie Holt is here. Uh if you have any questions, and I'm, of course, also available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Anything? Public. Input. Public input on the project? Okay, um. Uh since there's no questions, I can ask for a motion on this.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the request from La Casa Development for a tentative subdivision map. For phase six of Gold Country Estates. Creating twenty-six single-family residential lots on a four point nine three acres. Of a nine point three seven acre parcel with RMU residential mixed-use zoning. Located south of Dayton Village Parkway in Dayton. APN zero two nine dash seven six one dash zero eight. PLZ two zero two four dash zero two nine. Based on the findings one through thirteen. And subject to the conditions of approval, one through. Twenty-three is is contained in the staff report.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Fourteen C for possible action to approve the request for a division of land into large parcels, tentative map to divide a seven hundred ninety-six point eight-two acre parcel. Into four parcels, the smallest being forty point three zero acres. Located on the east and west side of USA Parkway at the Lion County and Story County border in Lion County. North of Stagecoach and northwest of Silver Springs, APN zero two one dash four eleven dash zero four, PLZ twenty twenty-four. Zero twenty-five. Yes.
Hi, please announce senior plan. Good morning, Mister Chair and Commissioners. So we are here to talk about the division of land of large parcels, tentative map. The property is located right on the Lion County, Story County border. Um crossing both the east and west sides of USA Parkway. And it's northwest of Silver Springs and directly north of Stagecoach. And access to site if future development was to occur would be off of USA Parkway. So they're requesting to divide this into four parcels. The minimum parcel size is forty point three oh, which meets the definition of the vision of land to parcel. And I want to point out on this map, it's kind of hard to see. Parcel two is a large, bigger one that is kind of surrounding off to the northeast. Parcel one is directly adjacent to uh USA Parkway. Parcel four is actually the right-of-way. That encompasses USA Parkway. And parcel three is on the west side. So a lot of times it's gotten confusing where parcel four was. Um. This property, the subject sites, uh located in the Lion County General Land Use North. Which is in the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan is designated as specific plan or cooperative planning area. As shown in the cooperative planning areas with Burnley. So the zoning on the parcel is all RR five ti- under titled ten, which uh associates to RR twenty under title fifteen, which has a minimum twenty acres. Um the parcels surrounding the property to the north and east are also zoned RR twenty. The property to the south, although it doesn't show currently on this map, is actually the planned unit development. Uh for the Northern Nevada Industrial Center, the future NNIC development. And the properties to the west are um in Story County and Arizona's forestry. And the Trick Industrial Center begins a few miles to the north along USA Parkway. So for a division of land into large parcels, the following findings have to be met. There are. Six of them, and we feel that these findings have been met. The details of all that are included in my staff report. This was heard by the Planning Commission on July ninth, and it was approved unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners. Staff also agrees uh recommends approval it as it meets the findings and it is subject to the conditions. Of approval which are included in the staff report if development is to occur. So here's a possible motion, also included you have, if you so choose, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Keller, any questions? Public input? Then nobody in house or on Zoom. I'll look for a motion on fourteen C.
I'm I'll make the motion. Based on the aforementioned findings A through F and subject to conditions one through sixteen. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the request by NV Reno Industrial for a division of land into large parcels. Tentative map to divide a seven hundred and ninety-six point eight-two acre parcel into four parcels. The smallest being forty point three oh acres located on the east and west side of USA Parkway. At the Lion County and Story County border in Lion County. North of Stagecoach and northwest of Silver Springs, APN oh two one four one one oh four, PLZ twenty twenty-four dash oh two five.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Uh Community Development, fifteen A for possible action. Discussion provide direction to staff regarding the equestrian facility use. In title fifteen and the inclusion of rodeos in the definition of equestrian facility. Discussion and direction may include whether the use should continue to be permitted in certain zoning districts, performance standards of the equestrian facility use. And the enforcement of any existing or future code changes. Yes.
Morning.
Morning.
Gavin Henderson, Lion County Community Developer, Development Director. Sorry, still getting used to it for a long time. Anyways, uh rodeo discussion today. I have a brief presentation just outlining some topics that are uh are the important for our discussion today. Moving forward, I have objectives um of the discussion. We have demonstrate the definition related to rodeos for Lion County Development Code. Um provide a brief background as for reasons for discussion. Um and then identify land use designations by zoning districts where rodeos are permitted underneath a question facility use designation. Identify performance-based standards associated with rodeos according to the performance-based standards for question facilities. Um demonstrate some potential pass port and then uh final item is uh just discussion items, a couple of questions to maybe lead the discussion. So moving forward, we have uh just a brief definition of uh rodeo. So rodeo does not have a def- definition in title fifteen. Um so we utilize um a question facilities. So a question facility or facilities where horses are used for rentals, riding lessons. Rodeos, shows or training where training may include horses now toward on site. So just wanted to start the conversation with this, um how uh rodeos are included in title fifteen underneath a question facility definition. And then moving forward for a background for discussion, um question facility assist rodeo events being held on parcels with following. So zoning, so parcels are zoned, um currently RR three from the previous title ten zoning um classifications, which utilizing the zoning consistency matrix. Translates to RR five under title fifteen requiring parcels that be a minimum of five acres in size. Um parcel size, parcel sizes are in performance with the performance-based standards for the question facilities, which we will go over in more details later in the slides. The performance-based standards require a parcel to the minimum of five acres in size for the question facility use. Parcel locations, parcels have abutting rural residential zone properties. Having zoning classifications of RR five and larger or five acre minimums. Um and then the character districts, as we know, the character districts provide guidance to the type, intensity, density, and general development standards for the uses intended to occur within the boundaries of that character district. Um the parcels have the rural character district, which includes areas that are predominantly low-density residential development that may or may not have agriculture or land use incorporated. Move forward, I just wanted to kind of go over uh land use tables uh relatively quickly. As you can see, um on this table, question facilities are permitted on the larger rural residential, rural residential zoning districts, having a minimum parcel size of five acres or larger. The question facilities are also permitted in all the agriculture and resource zoning districts, as well as the tourist commercial. They're also permitted an open space and public facilities. And then moving forward, I kind of just wanted to go over where they're not permitted currently. Uh they're not permitted currently in both the. Suburban residential, commercial, and mixed-use zoning districts. As well as the employment and industrial zoning district. And then next, I want to just go briefly over some performance-based standards uh for our question facilities. I did like highlight the number one, just to kind of um. Bring about that 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 do have the have to have the five acre minimum to even have the the use on on the site. So the main performance-based standards begins with the parcel size, parcel size needing to be a minimum of five acres. Uh moving down the list, the performance-based standards and standards provide descriptions relating to activity areas, buildings. Um and manure to include setbacks from both property lines and residential property. Um as well as the facilitation of that maneuver on the property that first man. Um continued um. In the performance-based standards, the standards outline the permitted activities such as retail sales, boarding, classes, training, and lessons. The standards also relate the the use if the event is to partake underneath a special event and the requirements for state health regulations approved prior to that special event rule, and that's where it's there's food being served. And so forth. So um. Lastly, the standards outline some uh some requirements for outside storage areas pertaining to location setbacks and design. Uh move forward, kind of closer to what the discussion would be about today. It's just some potential pass port. So one of the potential paths, we have the possible code amendment to demonstrate following. Uh we have to define rodeo. The term rodeo, establish performance-based standards for rodeos. Establish zoning districts for which the use can occur, um and then establish an enforcement mechanism for the changes of the code to include rodeos. And that may or may not also include um the removal of that term from the question facilities to make it its own isolated term in the code. Um staff recommendations. So um currently staff would not recommend the code amendment changes of the following. Um so enforcement. Seems to be the biggest problem because these events take place on weekends, total enforcement is on work weekends. So that puts the onus on Sheriff's Department uh to go in and of course, our regulations. Um and then as far as, you know, code amendment specific to title fifteen, we'd actually have to go beyond that. And we'd possibly have to identify the definition of events, and that could become, you know, tricky. I mean, what is an event? Is it a per person, you know, capital that we have to kind of put in place, or is it, you know, selling? Um retail services and that uh kind of component to kind of dictate whether it's an event or not. And we'd also have to make amendments to title six um in order for the sheriff to go out regulate those kind of events. Moving forward, um for another potential path forward. So currently, staff is in progress of an amendment to title fifteen land use tables. Uh the amendment would include adding the accessory designation to the legend to establish uses as accessory to a primary structure of residence. So these parcels will zone rural residential. Primary use is residential. So the makeup on it would happen to establish primary residence in the property before the use can occur. And staff is currently working on this. Um it's kind of. From my um thirty thousand foot view of it so far, um we kind of, it's kind of in the preliminary stages, um but we're still continuing efforts to um come forward that future. Uh so staff would recommend the board support for the amendment to the land use tables for which pressure facilities will be considered accessory uses to a primary structure of residence or permitted on rural residential properties. Um at this point, staff would recommend no changes to code and the continued efforts toward the changes to plan. And then I just had some brief questions, kind of pertaining to the item. So. Should the use continue to be permitted in certain zoning districts? Um should question facility performance-based standards continue to be applied to the use? And then how shall existing or future code changes be enforced? And with that being said, I'll just open and look for up for a discussion and direction.
Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hendricks.
I I brought this item forward because every time I go to Stagecoach, burn advisory board meeting. Or other event, someone talks to me about this issue because it's become such an annoyance in that area. Um. And. The difficulty for me is equestrian facility. Is not the same as rodeo in my mind. So I feel like something needs to be done to separate those two. And that's what I'd like to see.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh uh thank you, Mister Chair. And did I hear you correctly say that our code does not have a definition of rodeo? And it. Correct?
Yes.
I I I would agree with uh Commissioner Hendricks. Uh. I also wanted.
I also wanted, because of the traffic, I I really want that addressed in something that we do. Because it's not made to have all that traffic over the weekend and it it causes problems, so.
Go ahead.
So Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Director Henderson, um, brought up several different issues. So one of, you know, we, uh, as staff, we've had several meetings on this to try and figure out what the best path moving forward. And one of the challenges is how do, how do you define a rodeo? So what separates that from an event where you just have people at your house? Riding horses and and doing rodeo type events. Versus what where where is that line there? I guess it's a, uh, based on the number of attendees? Is it based on ticket sales? Um, what what does that look like? And then the challenge with that becomes, how do you enforce it? Um, as Director Director Henderson mentioned. You end up with, um, gather my thoughts here. So on on the enforcement piece, uh, most of these events happen on nights. Which is Director Henderson mentioned, we are not, um, we currently do not have code enforcement staff that works on. So it would be on the Sheriff's Department to enforce that. Part of the challenge with that, depending on how you delineate that is, um, creating probable cause for them to enter that, that property or establishing probable probable cause for them to enter that property. Um, to determine whether or not it is a rodeo versus a party or something. And so that becomes a challenge that, uh, I'm not sure how that would be enforced. We unfortunately, we can't just take a complaint as enough evidence to prosecute that case. Remember code enforcement viol- or code violations are criminal offenses in Lyon County or misdemeanor offense. So we have to be able to build a case and investigate that, uh, so that becomes a bit of a challenge there. I'm not saying that it can't be done. But uh, it's something that has to be considered as we take a look at these types of issues.
Questions for the county manager?
I just, when I was talking about traffic, I'm also looking at parking. And I did, can they be required to be on the property if they're having an event so that the parking isn't, uh, to the residents, it's, you know?
So that's certainly something that we can take a look at adding to the performance things of that if we were to to change that, the performance standards there. I mean, those are things that we can take a look at. I think that, um, you know, addressing the issue of making it an accessory use to a primary use. Um, would help because it, you know, you have to have a residence on that property. So you can't just have a five acre lot that somebody's going out and doing. A rodeo event type on, right? They would have to have a house, which means they've got that running water, they've got, uh, um, bathrooms, they've got that type of thing for for that. I mean, I think the intent. Well, I'll just leave it at that.
What appears to me is, of course, as usual, things getting out of control. You know, they have large groups of people, no facilities to take care of these people. Traffic, that's a problem. Um, it it sounds like you you're aware of the problem and you're working towards some issues to control that. But at the present time, I don't see where the commission can pump and say, all right, no rodeos. We've got to work through this to make sure that we are not causing the problem with the changes that we're making and we have to do it in a legal fashion. So, um, the possibilities that we're looking at. We're making the changes and controlling this situation might be the way to go. So, uh, Commissioner Keller, you have more to comment?
Yeah, I ju- I was curious, how many rodeos do we have, uh, going on a year?
I I know that I've heard of two in Stagecoach that are a major annoyance to a lot of people. Just in that one community. So.
Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that, I I just want to make a statement that we need to tread very carefully. On this because I firstly do not like taking someone's ability to use their properties, they see fit away from them. So so we've got to, like I said, we need to tread very carefully. I'll leave it at that.
Like I, like I said, I mean, I don't know, how how, the key to it would be how you delineate. And find what a rodeo is.
And I'm, I think the performance standards are important. I know one of the biggest issues has been a total lack of sanitation. Um, facilities and if it had to be an accessory use to where at least person doing it has to live with it, just like their neighbors do, is help. Um, the other concern that I don't think that, I'm not sure how to address is there's been animals injured, but I don't know that that's something that we have control over if that's a a different issue for a different department.
Um, also, it seems like, uh, back quite ways when we were talking about a wine tasting area. I believe I was the only objection to that in a residential area. Um, parking on site, the parking would only be allowed at that activity on the property and no other areas. So if we're looking at a hundred people coming to a five acre parcel. Uh, that's a significant parking problem for that area along with the horse event or rodeo or cattle or sanitary situation, uh, concerned. So, but I I think we need to go down the path of figuring out how to regulate this legally. And not put us in a situation that, uh, we're we're going to cause more problems for the county.
And as I said, the parking issue could absolutely be addressed in the performance standards of the use.
Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a thought on on the parking. If you have legal off-street parking on those streets, how can you restrict it? Or do you have to go out and restrict it just during the event? I mean, it it just the logistics of this is is really, uh, tr- troubling.
Like I said, staff has had many conversations about this to try and figure out a solution. And the more you ask questions, the more it seems to unravel. So, um, feel that. That's why staff is making the recommendation.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I I think from from my perspective, this isn't baked yet. You know, you guys need to do, continue to work on this. This is an important issue and we need to address it. But as of right now, I'm not comfortable personally making any decisions on this.
And just to be clear, this agenda item today is just to get feedback from the board as to what direction so that we can take a look at it further.
Just provide direction, Commissioner Keller.
And one of the things that was mentioned earlier that I'd really like you to focus on is the definition of rodeo and bringing that maybe outside of everything so that we can the definition will probably help us with some of that stuff.
I'm open to ideas if, uh, you have a good way to delineate that from a party or from a gathering of friends riding horses.
Can you say further? Nope. Okay, uh, public comment. You wish to comment, please come up and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Amanda Bernand, um, and I guess, so I live in one of these areas, it is very hugely impacted by this rodeo. There is in Title Fifteen in the same table, there is a a rodeo ta- uh, name, and it does require a conditional use permit and must occur on ten acres or more. And I guess what I'm looking for is that require these rodeos. I'm not trying to stop these rodeos. I'm trying to require them to have a conditional use permit. So when I go out walking, I don't have to see feces, human feces and toilet paper. That's unsanitary, it's a health risk and it's just gross. It's also the traffic on these roads. They're damaging this road. It's a, it's a non-maintained dirt road. I accept I moved there on a, on this kind of road. But I didn't expect a couple hundred vehicles speeding down this road. It's in poor condition. This owner, this who does not live on this property waters their rodeo grounds, but not the road. We've had several close calls. I was involved in one. I had a truck pulling a trailer. Stop about five feet from my vehicle when I was turning in because he was going about sixty to seventy miles an hour. Slammed on his brakes and went into a skid. It's only a matter of time before somebody is injured or possibly killed on on this event. The dust hangs heavy in the air when it occurs. And so what we're looking for is this conditional use permit. So these rodeo organizers are required to have sanitary sanitation facilities that are adequate. They have one porta potty on site. But that's on site all the time. You don't even know if it's empty. They also need to manage this traffic. They direct traffic down the neighborhood road where all the homes are. They could go down a road where there are no homes, but they don't, they put up signs to direct it down the neighborhood. These are large events. These aren't the family get-togethers where you're just roping some steers. And like I said, I'm not trying to stop the rodeos. I used to rodeo when I was a kid. I'm trying to make these rodeo organizers get a conditional use permit. Because the residents' health and safety right now are at risk and it's just going to get worse. It's going to escalate. So we do need to address this. And to me, an equestrian facility in the name means equine. If we just remove that term rodeo from that definition of equine facility. These rodeos would be required to get a conditional use permit and it would address a lot of these problems. And as far as not dealing with it because it's on a weekend. I'm sorry, but our, we're being exposed to all this on a weekend. That's just a fact. And so it does need to be dealt with. And I would, I really do feel that we need to change this and remove the term rodeo from equestrian facility so that this can be dealt with before somebody does get injured and to improve our lives. So, thank you.
My name is Lenona Higley. I also live in the area of one of these rodeos. It is on a two acre parcel. And usually there's between two and three hundred people that come in. And usually thirty-six trucks with large stock trailers bringing in cattle. One time they were investigated by the state of Nevada for bringing in cattle that were not licensed to come into Nevada because they did not have the proper paperwork. I have been trying for some time to get this under control due to the fact of, um, you're classifying them as a rodeo. It's not a rodeo. It is an abuse fest. These people come in here at eight o'clock in the morning and start drinking. Okay, it's tail tripping. They take a steer or a calf. They chase it down, they grab its tail and they drag it around the arena. Which causes a broken neck, broken leg, broken back or completely pulling the spine from the animal. This is not an event. This is a horror show. This is what we are being exposed to in our neighborhoods. This is not a rodeo, a rodeo. Definition, a public performance or competition in which cowboys, people who take care of cattle show their skill at riding cattle and wild horses and catching cattle with ropes. I gave you earlier a message that I received from the person who lives on that property, that two acre parcel. That no, they do not do ropes. They tail trip. Okay, tail trip to the NRS ties in the equestria, ties in the horses, but it is not onto the cattle. Okay, this is abuse. If you go into the Title Seven, I'm also on the Animal Advisory Board. If you go into the Title Seven, there is a section, seven dot oh one dot five. Then that animal cannot be tortured, harassed or overworked. This is not being enforced by Lyon County. Like I said, the classification of a rodeo, this is not it. This is an abuse fest. The people are drunk, peeing, pooping, throwing glass bottles, accosting the neighbors. When they try to ask them to turn the music down. This is not right that we have to live in the neighborhood with this kind of thing going on. I agree, they need to be permitted. They need to have a veterinarian at every single one of these facilities that are set up at these events. Due to the fact that the animals are not being treated properly. And I don't know if any of you have seen them, but they're pretty sad. Pretty bad and should not be allowed in our county. Thank you.
Well, you're good. That was right at three minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We actually were not able to provide the, um, paper that, um, Miss Segley provided earlier because it contained comments from other, um, other people. Well, there was two, there was two in there. And so, uh, I checked with the DA's office and we we couldn't provide that.
My name is Russ Wright. I live in Dayton. I take exception to Commissioner Henderson saying that those would be very careful in taking rights away from people and what they can do to their property. I think we have to be equally careful in imposing my rights on the people that already live there. And being very careful. The other thing I I find it curious that nobody in this county has the capability of defining rodeo. One of the grandest rodeos in the country occurs every year in Reno. I came from a community in the San Joaquin Valley that had the second best rodeo in the United States. If communities like Clovis and rodeo and Reno can define what a rodeo is. It seems inconceivable to me that Lyon County staff can't 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 come up with the definition.
Commissioner Keller?
I think I was looking for the planning defin- uh, uh, definition as far as planning is concerned. Uh, for rodeo, not just for an overall rodeo thing, so so that we could establish how to regulate it. So that's why I was asking for that. So we can borrow and steal from somebody.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Barbara Espinoza. I live on Silver Lane in half for over ten years. I am afraid of the traffic of the rodeo. I don't mind the rodeo. It's the ignorant drivers that come down the street with a big huge truck pulling a fully loaded horse trailer. I can't even, I don't even go to the store anymore because I'm afraid of driving out of my driveway. One night after the rodeo was over, there were three cars coming down our street. We have no street lights. It's dark. We're in the country. They're racing, three cars. And I would just, I would ask you, do you think any of you would want to live in a situation like that? You're afraid to go out of your driveway. We moved there because it was peaceful. My husband and I are both seniors. And I don't usually get up at these things. So if I say something wrong, I'm sorry. But I'm really upset about some of the attitudes that whether it's a rodeo or this or that. You're endangering people's lives by having this traffic. Humongous traffic on a dirt, unmaintained road. Thank you for listening. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous.
Thank you.
Any further comments? So I think we provided direction to the staff. Could put a motion to that if we want to say that we've got an input, um, and just for possible action discussion, provide direction to staff. We have enough direction for staff.
So.
Move forward with this issue. I'll let you move forward with the issue.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So if we're gonna be able to consider that as direction to the staff, there has to be a motion on that.
It's fine. I'll go.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we direct staff to continue, uh, working on this, um, this this issue and come back to us with possible solutions, including possibly a definition of what a rodeo is.
And performance standard.
And performance standards.
Okay.
Second.
So we've got a motion to continue on this and provided direction to the staff to come up with the possible solutions for the situation occurring. Um, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes four zero. The marching orders on that. Fifteen B for possible action. Approval to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Phase One and accept the offer of dedication resolution for the roadways as shown on said map. And go ahead.
Uh, Lyon County, um, we need to go with Dr. Henderson. Just wanted to know if there's any questions on any of this.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners on releasing the bond? Public input on the bond? If not, let's go for motion. Take anybody?
I move that we approve to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Phase One and accept the offer of dedication and resolution for the roadways as shown on said map.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendrick, or I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Fifteen C for possible action approval to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Phase Five and accept the offer of dedication resolution for the roadways as shown on said map. And any commissioner input on that? Any public input? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on fifteen C.
A move that we approve to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Phase Five and accept the offer of dedication and resolution for the roadways as shown on said map.
Second.
Okay. Um, same thing, motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Fifteen D for possible action approval to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Backbone Roadway Network and accept the offer of dedication and resolution of the roadway as shown on said map. Any commissioner input on that one? Any public input? Being none, I'll look for a motion on that one.
I move to approve to release the maintenance bond currently held for the Traditions Village One Backbone Roadway Network and accept the offer of dedication and resolution for the roadways as shown on said map.
Second. That was a little scotch.
I just looking for a second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hendrick, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, uh, we've got three more items. It's almost noon. I think we could probably finish here without breaking for lunch. Uh, sixteen A has already been completed. No, I'm sorry, that was sixteen C. Just marked the wrong one here for possible action to discuss and provide direction to the county manager in regards to developing a bill draft resolution for the twenty twenty-five legislature, which may include discussion on possible topics for BDR, direction to staff to research and come back with information related to a possible BDR. An input from the public on possible topics for BDR, the board may direct staff to prepare a resolution, bring back to the board for further consideration. And we have Mr. Haskin. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record. So, um, if we are going to move forward with the BDR this year, we have to figure out what that's going to be today because I only have a few days to get something back on the agenda for the fifteenth and get it submitted to um, the LCB Legislative Council Bureau by, uh, September first. So we have the list of ideas that we've discussed so far. Commissioner Henderson did reach out and provide a list of BDRs that NACO is, uh, taking a look at. And I don't know if they officially, uh, they voted on them already.
The board of directors approved them at the last meeting.
Perfect. That was the reason they were not included as backup is because it hadn't been approved yet. And, um, so there we, I had to I'll, I'll go over them right now. Um, so they're taking a look at four different things. One is corner public records in addition to NRS Chapter two fifty-nine to clarify that certain records of a medical examiner or coroner are public records. Then there's voter signatures in addition to NRS Chapters two thirty-nine and two ninety-three to establish that voter, uh, uh, records of voter signatures held by the county clerk or registrar of voters for purposes of establishing or validating voter registration are not public records. This would allow for the examination of signatures um, within the county office, but not the availability of reproductions or distributions. Uh, one is registered voter requirement established the, that qualified electors must be registered voters. And then the last one, uh, is doing with renewable energy projects, and that would require local government involvement and the consideration of renewable. So those are the ones that NACO is taking a look at now. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions about existing ones or, um, if there's any new ideas from the board.
I, I know NACO's wanting to move part of that forward on the industrial solar, but one thing they, they say is a no, non-starter is eliminating the tax abatements, but if maybe just a bill to reduce it because the way it's set up, the state still gets theirs, but the counties don't get ours. And I think we, we have to have something to make this even feasible.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, um, I understand the tax abatement thing on the opposite side of that though. Since we were mandated by the legislature to allow EV charging stations within the county, I would like to see some way, some kind of franchise agreement or something, some way to get some money out of it so that EVs can help, you know, start paying a little bit for, for roads. Now I realize there'll, there'll be other bills in the legislature, but there's several reasons to bring a bill. And, and one is just to send a message, which is, you know, if we go to Commissioner Henderson's idea on the tax abatements, that would send a message. Uh, adding, adding the discussion of the EV charging stations to how to figure out how EVs can pay their fair share, that may be beneficial as well. And, um, you know, the, the I think there's a way we could combine the requiring the GPS navigation companies to post hazards for than forty-eight hours and enhancing the five-one-one platform. We might could put those at one BDR, just a thought. And that's, that's, that's my thoughts.
They said it all. So both those are, I'd agree with both of them, except, uh, for the one that, uh, Commissioner Hendricks, uh, brought forward. We're going to end up with the problem with go ahead. I was trying to get some of that, uh, to us. So what we, what I would like to do is just, uh, at least set it at a very, very low percentage so that we can format it to where we're supporting roads or doing something, infrastructure, so that we have a space to work for in future legislative activities. So something real low.
I'm okay with that.
What exactly do we want to get since we've got to have this done today? Which actual issue are we going to write it all up? Is what, because I agree with what you're saying, the abatement and and I, I agree with that. The power we're going to put this in something that he can turn in.
Yeah, because you do, uh, like, like Commissioner Keller said, we, we will get a lot of pushback from go ahead on the abatement thing. Um, I firstly, I mean, obviously it was my suggestion, something about the EV charging stations, but the other emergency management stuff, I'll go with either of them.
Commissioner Keller.
I think as far as going for what what we can win in a fight right now, because this isn't going to bring the back end of NACO. It's going to bring just us, right? We'll have to go and, and, uh, get the support. I think the easiest one to try to, if we're just got the one is emergency management. It would be the easiest to tackle and, and actually be able to move forward. I, I like them all, but I don't know if we can move them forward.
I, I think we could combine the two of them. I think there
Yeah.
That there's enough of a nexus there. Actually, you might could combine all three.
I think you could do all three.
Yeah, because we're, we're probably talking the same NRS chapter.
That I'm not a hundred percent.
Yeah. But that, but that's okay.
So basically what I'd like though is you've got the information here is to be able to
spell it.
Write it down, spell it out. Put the nexus on whatever you want. Get it to him so we can get it. Can we do that? And you think you can?
I think we can give them direction.
Okay.
To, to bring it back at the next meeting.
But, yeah. Okay.
I'll take a swing at it if you want.
That's, we have.
Want to do public comment first.
Yeah, I'll do public comment, but I just want to make sure we can get something in a timely manner here.
I'll take, I'll take.
Okay, um, so any public input on this item? Seeing none, then we're going to work this issue and get back with you on that. Anything further on that? I think we know our direction on sixteen A, sixteen B for possible.
Do you want a motion on that?
Oh, motion up. I thought we're just basically, I thought we're just going to table it here and, and work on it.
No, because he's, he's got to start working. I could bring it back next week. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I moved, we direct county staff to, um, develop a, a BDR or, or, what's the resolution for a BDR? Resolution for a BDR requiring GPS navigation companies to post hazards when forty, within forty-eight hours of officials reporting and support communications between GPS providers and emergency managers. And also to enhance the five-eleven platform so jurisdictions can include information on local road conditions.
Second.
Okay, that was about, that was about your second that. So, um, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, that's a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, we've got the orders on that, four zero. Then we'll go to sixteen B. Uh, for possible action, appoint a commissioner as the primary and possibly the alternate, should it become available to the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. Seeing on that one.
Uh, Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record. Um, so with Commissioner Henderson stepping down off of the NACO board, um, we need to, um, appoint another member of the commission to that board. Um, the item is worded such that if, uh, the vice chair happens to be elected to that board, then we would also pick a new vice chair.
Alternate.
Alternate?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, so what we're looking at here would be a motion for our primary of the NACO board. Do I have a motion?
Oh, oh, uh, put Scott forward.
Okay.
Since he's already at all those meetings anyway.
So you're going to make an appointment of Scott Keller?
Yes.
As the primary?
Yes.
All right.
Kim, is this all one motion? Because then if that was to go through, then we would need the alternate or is it two different?
Yeah, it, it, primary and possibly the alternate on this. So if you're the primary, then I'll request an appointment of alternate on the board.
That is a good question. Let me check real quick.
Well, it does say and possibly the alternate should be, become available.
Yeah.
Or, or one, yeah. Okay. Need to probably make one and do it.
So it would have to be one motion.
One motion.
So, um, my recommendation would be that, um, if the motion is, um, Commissioner Keller, then the motion also included.
I, I, I got it. I got it.
All right, I can. I can make it. Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Commissioner Keller as the primary and, uh, Commissioner Hendricks as the alternate for, uh, the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors for the remainder of twenty twenty-four. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Hockden, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. And congratulations on the move, movement there. Uh, sixteen C's already been done. We'll go to seventeen, agenda request. Um, any agendas requests here? Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yeah, I like a, a gender request on the next meeting to talk about the Nevada NACO conference. In September, yeah. And, and that, that would include, you know, authorizing commissioners to go and, and other details for that. Okay.
Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Keller.
Nothing.
Okay, uh, also we had discussed the, um, uh, getting information on the, the May, um, Western Interstate. Uh, say we haven't really got much information on that yet. Uh, so we will get information on that as quickly as we can and present that to the board for Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota. Commissioner Keller.
And we do have some stuff that it's not quite ready, but, uh, just watch the whole NACO schedule because we do have rec coming up and stuff like that that we might be participating in.
And I don't have anything at this time. So final commissioner comments eighteen. Mr. Hendricks. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Keller. Um, one request ahead for an announcement. Um, I have not heard anything from, um, Congressman Horford as far as coming up to, um, Smith Valley District Four area. Uh, he is of course the incumbent congressman for District Four, but, uh, I was told that, um, the, um, Republican, uh, John Lee will be in Smith Valley on Sunday the fourth. So if anybody wanted to meet that um, official or should say, uh, candidate for District Four, uh, to just see me and I'll get the information out. Definitely not being political here, uh, Democrats, independents, anybody else has anything that they want to do in my district. Um, since I do have District Four and District Two, please let me know and I can get that word out to people so that they can meet the candidates for these offices. That's the important issue. And the last final public participation, if anybody has any information they'd like to share with us at this time, uh, citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask the state their name for the record and we give them three minutes. If I have any final comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll move over here. There is no closed session today. So we will adjourn at twelve eleven.